Oh yeah, is there supposed to be another hotel?
It's been the Headland.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, so that's already, is that going through?
They've been negotiating.
Just kidding.
Well, I had to get used to it on my husband as well, for first, and he went there, but I like it now.
Oh, so who, who's doing that?
He's had it for a while, but like I said, first I had to get used to it, I was unsure if I liked it, but now I do.
And now she told me to shave it off. It was just a pile. I wish it was cooler.
Yeah. I'll give you my jacket if you'd like.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for July 10th, 2017, and ask Commissioner Donner to lead us off in the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Secretary, can you do the roll call for us, please?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present this evening.
Thank you. This moves us to Item A, which is Approval of the Minutes, minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting for June 26th. I did have one, it's a typo, sorry. And it was on, uh, find it here. Actually, I don't know where it went, I'll find it and let you know. Any other comments or questions?
I have one. So on page six, on the public comments, there were two comments made, one by Jim Carley and one by Robert Yor, about parking on Blue Lantern, and I think that their comments were actually reversed, saying, because it says that the people on, oh, bear me, sorry. That the people on Chula Vista are actually parking on Blue Lantern, I think the fact is that the people on Chula Vista are allowed to park on Blue Lantern, but do not, so that area is underutilized. So both of the comments, both say the same thing, but it's reversed of what the intent was.
Any other comments? Any motions? Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah. Given with those corrections, which it sounds like everybody's agreement, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of June 26th, 17.
If I can just recommend that we have staff go back and review the tapes to ensure that the comments were flipped around.
Okay.
Great.
Then my motion is pending.
Staff's confirmation on the, on the audiotape.
All right, we had a first by Commissioner Murphy, a donor by Commissioner Donner, so let's vote. We've got two votes pending, it looks like. One left. There we go, all right. Thank you, that moves us on to B, Item B, which is Public Comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the Public Comments section, or on an agenda item, is asked to complete a request to speak form, which is available at the door, and please provide that to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to being heard. Any person wishing to address the Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on an agenda is requested to do so at this time. Do we have any requests to speak? Okay, great. We went on to Item C, which is Consent Calendar, we do not have any items on the consent, is that correct? Okay. So we're, Item D, Public Hearing, which is a coastal development permit, CDP 17-0008, Site Development Permit, SDP 17-0013, Minor Conditional Use Permit, CUP 17-005M, for a new 57-room hotel, 4,000-square-foot restaurant space and outdoor dining, 40-bed hostel, visitor center retaining walls greater than 30 inches in height, visible from the public right-of-way, and tandem parking for employees and valet for the Wave Resort Headlands Commercial Site located at 34075 Pacific Coast Highway within the coastal zone. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Senior Planner Sean Nicholas will give the staff report.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Sean Nicholas, Project Planner. This is the CDP, SDP, and Minor Conditional Use Permit associated with the Wave Resort at 34075 Pacific Coast Highway. Just a bit of background, as we're looking at the vicinity map, as everyone is, I believe, aware, there are three primary components of the Headlands Development and Conservation Plan. A residential component, a portion of which you can see here, in open space and trail, and various amenities, open space amenities that have been approved, and then one, uh, two visitor recreation commercial sites, the first of which we're going to be discussing this evening and highlighted in the red bars. As discussed by Chair Nelson, the project components include a 35,000-square-foot two-story building with subterranean parking, a 57-room hotel, 40-bed hostel, 4,000-square-foot restaurant and outdoor dining, visitor center, retaining walls that are over 30 inches in height, is visible from the public right-of-way, and tandem parking for valet and employees. The subject site is in the Coastal Appeals Jurisdiction, and both HDCP, the Headlands Development and Conservation Plan, and Dana Point Zoning Code, some development standards from there as well do apply to the project. So here's a overall site plan of the proposed project, just to orient everyone. Pacific Coast Highway is located here at the top of your screen. We have Shoreline Drive, which is the access to that Upper Strands, Upper Headlands residential area, the Street of Green Lantern, and then the existing nail wall is this line right here, just to give some reference. The project site is an interesting project site, and provided some interesting opportunities and struggles for the applicant in terms of designing the project, as it does slope not only from that nail wall towards Pacific Coast Highway, but it does have a slope also down when you go from Shoreline to the Street of Green Lantern. So the applicant has worked the project to work and flow with the land and to reduce potential massing impacts, and allows for that subterranean parking, as you'll see here. Another highlight of the, of the site plan I want to point out is this entrance courtyard here, and the applicable visitor center that's shown there. As a requirement of the California Coastal Commission, the project is required to have a visitor center. The visitor center, and the applicant has indicated they envision a passive visitor center, not manned by any means, but a facility that will provide information, regional information, local information, events in the community, that's meant to be changed, updated. A final design hasn't been developed, there is a condition of approval in your resolution this evening, that a final design shall be approved by the Director of Community Development, but they have indicated in terms of this entry courtyard, that this is where the 800-square-foot visitor center facility will be located. Additionally, I want to highlight on this that you see, not only in the entrance courtyard, but in, uh, over here on the side, entered from Green Lantern, you see some identifications for art in public places. That is a requirement of the project, it is a project that is over a million dollars, and so there is conditions of approval regarding compliance. We have received a correspondence to staff just asking about the components of arts in public places, and they are looking, the applicant has indicated they're looking to put their art in public places on project site, and ultimately, one, if the project is approved, and then is submitted through, for building permits, we'll know what the total construction cost is, know what the money will have to be put towards that, and then we'll go through that process and ultimately come back before this commission for those components at that time. Lastly, before we move off this slide, I just wanted to highlight the access, ingress, egress of the project can be taken both off Green Lantern, coming through here, and drive straight through, and vice versa through to Shoreline Drive as well. So you have traffic that can go both ways, and they have valet access, so no matter which way you come into the project site, you have access to the valet provisions. So looking at development standards, the first and foremost, I want to point out on the far right-hand side, all the yeses, this project is compliant with all applicable HDCP and Dana Point Zoning Code requirements, the project does not require any variances, it does meet all of its setback requirements, the maximum height is 35 feet, and the HDCP provides three methods of measuring height with the most stringent applying, and we're going to look at some images that will show that clearly, how they're compliant with that requirement. The maximum massing in terms of lot coverage, floor ratio, you can see that they are below those requirements. And most importantly, the last one, the parking requirement, well, not most importantly, but something that we did also receive a phone call about at staff level, was the requirement regarding 129 spaces for the development, and that they are providing 130 standard spaces. So by just standard spaces alone, they are overparked by one space, and we're going to talk a little bit about, more about parking here in a second. So here's a breakdown of the actual parking requirements by use. This is a table, I believe, if I remember correctly, Table 2 in your, in your staff report this evening. It is a 57-room hotel, and by the Dana Point Municipal Code, which is what provides us our parking requirements this evening for this development. Does require one space per room, so 57 spaces there. There's a couple of parking requirements associated with the restaurant, but first, the 4,000-square-foot interior restaurant space, and then the outdoor dining area, so you can see there that 59 parking spaces are associated, are required for the restaurant use. The hostel was determined to be seven spaces required for the hostel, and as well as another Coastal Commission requirement, which is six spaces were provided at this particular project site for visitors of the open space, there's a trailhead right there on Shoreline, and they are to provide six spaces on-site, which they have done, for a total of 129 spaces, and as I said, just by the standard spaces alone, they have met and exceeded the parking requirements. On top of that, this evening you'll see that they have provided tandem parking spaces, both for employees and through a valet program, that increases the parking by 44 additional spaces, so that way that they have 174 spaces above, 174 spaces, which is 45 spaces above the required parking. So again, the project is overparked. So here's a perspective, this is pretty much looking down at the project from the Street of Green Lantern and PCH. Some key highlighted features here is you can see what's called the main deck level, the outdoor dining area associated with the restaurant, and the outdoor bar associated with the restaurant, here's the indoor restaurant space, you can kind of get a peek-a-boo, peek-a-boo look of that center courtyard, and some of the amenities, you can see, again, no more, in no place is the project site more than two stories, you can see here a great example of that, that on PCH of the hotel site, you have one, two stories, and then setback as, again, the project moves up towards that nail wall. We're going to talk a little bit more about the Coastal Commission required hostel component, which is in this location here, but I just wanted to highlight in terms of the overall development where the hostel is located, and you can see here another unique feature, which is the cantilever pool, which the architect is here and is very proud of, and I'm sure he'd be very happy to talk about this in the evening if there are questions on that, but you can also see the access point off of the Street of Green Lantern. So here is a site plan, or a floor plan, I should say, looking at that primary deck level, you can see the restaurant patio, which is primarily set behind that decorative wall that you could see on PCH, the pool facility and the other, and the deck as it stretches throughout the whole project, this is also what provides primary access to the hotel units on this level as well. And this is a deck level perspective that the applicant has prepared. This is the lower parking level, there's not much to cover here, what I really wanted to just highlight primarily on this site plan is you can see that in this area here, is we have all the trash, and as well as the loading and unloading, that was important to staff to make sure that that was taken off the street, you can see that it's screened behind the buildings to avoid potential impacts to surrounding areas, and as well as, that way it keeps the view as you're seeing from Pacific Coast Highway. All the trash, all of those components, all the offloading of goods, those are taken off the primary entryway into the city, or into town center, coming from the north, so staff has worked with the applicant, and they've designed it so it's tucked away and won't be visible and is well screened. And you can also see at that lower level is the entryway, is the separate entryway into the hostel here off of the Street of Green Lantern. Sorry, we have a bit of delay here in the computer. So we have just a couple of cross-sections, again, just wanting to highlight, the applicant has worked with the, the natural undulation of the land to create the subterranean space, as well as the, the two-story elements, you can see even when the project, the subterranean areas do daylight for access into the parking areas, they've taken out developable space above as applicable, so that way, again, there's only two stories, so one story with the second story above, this is as you enter offshore line, and similarly, similarly off of the Street of Green Lantern, that you have just the deck above. So again, just two stories, and this is a cross-section. Through the middle courtyard, they have the subterranean parking, you can see that they've created a subterranean garden space to try to activate the lower subterranean levels and enhance the overall feel of the, of the parking area, and you can see that they've, off PCH, which is this elevation here, again, that they've stepped back as the, as the elevation changes back towards the, back towards the nail wall. So what you see here is images showing not only the architecture, but also that what you see is the most extreme point in which part, heights are calculated per the HDCP, and you can see that at all points, this thicker red dotted line here is the 35-foot limitation, which a majority of the building is well within, and then there are provisions in the HDCP that allow for a five-foot encroachment of architectural features and mechanical screenings. There are a few very small areas that in which that encroaches, but again, well below the allowed threshold, percentage threshold of the overall roof, as you can see, majority of the screening is even below the, the 35-foot limitations. Just talking a little bit about design, the architect has called this a international architectural design, that would be another great question, again, for the applicant in terms of what that component in those design, and what their inspiration was on those, what makeup in international design, but the key components of the design guidelines as adopted in the HDCP is a very simple color palette, which they have utilized here, and again, using high-quality materials, which the stone veneer to really accent the building, again, it's a very subtle approach, but it's a very high-quality architectural design, a lot of landscaping is incorporated into it, a green roof, and a really thought and care was put into it, make sure it also ties in with, as it transitions into the town center, and again, the architect himself is here and can speak to some more of those design elements. You can see here, the lower elevation that this height on the portion that fronts Green Lantern, that this development is, is below the 35-foot threshold, and then you can see from the perspective, this is the nail wall behind you, that the project, so this is the hostel here, and you can see, again, that threshold underneath the height limitation, and as it steps up, this distance right here is about 75 feet from the public right-of-way. So again, the step up is about 75 feet back, and then the project steps up again, and it's again below the, the ultimate height that it could have been developed up to, but they are below that height limitation. The applicant also did provide a view simulation from the Regatta HOA across Pacific Coast Highway. While the city does not protect private views, they wanted to show the residents across the way that they had tried to be mindful of their views towards, down the Street of the Green Lantern, but from the city's perspective, it's just to show, I think, how the project site fits well in the, in the development. Site, you can see that a majority of the project is all below the existing hillside, and you can even see the nail wall above even the tallest portions of the proposed development, which is in this area, and then a straight-on view of that inner-tier courtyard and welcome pedestrian environment they're trying to create off of PCH. As I noted earlier, one of the components that was required by the California Coastal Commission as part of the approval of the LCP, as part of the overall approval of the Headlands Development, is the incorporation of a lower-cost overnight accommodation, which is through this 40-bed hostel development. While it is a separate operator, important to note is that the applicant has utilized the matching high-quality architectural details, architectural design components, so that while it is a lower-cost accommodation component, it has been architecturally designed into the building, so it does read as one development, and it's not treated as a lower-cost component, it's treated as a high-quality component of the project, so that is important, and you can see the access there, again, off the Street of Green Lantern. These are just some of the hostel concepts that the applicant has provided in terms of, should the project be approved, the ways in which they are looking to potentially develop the space and, and create the, the sleeping arrangements to meet the 40-bed requirement as set forth by the Coastal Commission, and that bottom-right corner here, you can get a sensor, there's a couple of lounges that are incorporated into the, the design, and some of the concepts that they have for some of that communal space as well. So as I noted, it is a 40-bed requirement by the California Coastal Commission, required to be local, lower-cost overnight accommodations, both by the LCPA, the general plan requires it, as, that were approved, general plan amendment that was approved as part of the project, as well as in the development standards set forth in the HDCP Chapter III. So the Coastal Commission doesn't really provide a number of what is low-cost accommodations, they have provided some guidelines recently, in 2016, they updated those guidelines regarding how to develop lower-cost accommodation costs. So what staff did to give the Planning Commission a sense of what that rate is, if it were, if this hostel were to open tomorrow, which obviously it's not, it would be approximately $51.86 per bed per night. So just to kind of give you a sense of that, but as we said, it's not opening tomorrow, and so to accurately reflect the requirements and the region's costs at the time in which the facility is opening, there is a condition of approval that has been included, that they will update, the operator will update that calculation either based on the information, the guidance the Coastal Commission has provided at this time, or any updated guidance that the Coastal Commission provides between now and then, and then every three years that they'll update that to ensure continued compliance with that lower-cost accommodation, again, trying to meet that standard set by Coastal. Getting close to the end here, there was a updated traffic and noise study that was developed as a component of this review. The proposed project as developed, as reviewed by the EIR and Addendum as part of the original Headlands was more of a multiple restaurant, multiple retail, multiple office type of development, and compared to what is being proposed now, there is about 1,096 less daily trips than what was originally considered, as well as looking at potential noise in the, associated with the restaurant use, including if there was music or alcohol, which is not a part of the, the application this evening, but you know, assuming a worst-case scenario of utilization of the site at the nearest sensitive receptor across the way, the Regatta HOA, assuming even that they had no back wall, which they have the very nice glass walls back there, their decibels in the back there would come out at 42.3, which is 19.2 decibels below the ambient noise of PCH, which was, as a component of the project, they did record on PCH and determine what that was, it was in the 60s, I believe, 60, 62, just 62, I believe, was the ambient noise on PCH. So overall, then, there was less traffic that was, then generated than, than originally approved and considered, and there is no noise impact, and as I stated, the ER and Addendum was previously certified, and because there is no new impacts especially associated with traffic and noise, and all mitigation measures associated with the original development have been incorporated, or will be incorporated with this project, it's the water quality management program is the last component for this site that has not been incorporated. Staff has determined that it is exempt from CEQA, and those necessary findings have been incorporated into your draft resolution this evening. So in conclusion, with all of that, the staff has determined that the project is consistent with the applicable Headlands Development and Conservation Plan development standards and design guidelines, and also the applicable Dana Point Zoning Code requirements, it exceeds the parking requirements, it is below the HDCP height limitations, and there is no additional traffic or noise impacts due to the proposed project before the Planning Commission this evening. It also provides all of the required Coastal Commission features as per the original HDCP approval. Staff also has found that all of the findings for the CDP, SDP, and the Minor Conditional Use Permit can be made, including consistency with the local coastal program, as we've discussed, visual compatibility as it transitions from the project site into the town center, and consistent with those applicable development standards, and with that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution approving the CDP, the SDP, and the Minor Conditional Use Permit. This concludes staff's presentation, staff and the applicant are available to address any Commissioner questions this evening.
Is there going to, excuse me, going to be a presentation by the developer, or an opportunity for us to, if anybody asks, I've got a number of questions that...
I know that the applicant is here and available, I don't know if he has some components he can go over from my project, if there's particular questions you have from my presentation. He did provide a presentation to the Regatta HOA on June 28th, I have that PowerPoint presentation available if you would want to see components of that, but I don't believe he has necessarily a particular presentation ready other than to address particularly Commissioners' questions.
Okay, great. Okay, so at this time, Planning Commission have any questions for staff? I know I have a few, but yield to my fellow Commissioners first if... Do they have Scott? Please, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Thanks for that presentation, Sean.
Thank you, sir.
Just a few questions. I don't know if this is important or not, on sheet A 1.04, it talks about area of roof, are there any requirements related to that? Because I'm, this shows like the roof area, but there's other areas which are deck that serve as roof over other parts of the structure, is that, is that important at all, or is that just kind of for information purposes only?
Are you talking about the information down there about the, the percentages right there?
Well, not the percentages over, but just area of roof.
I just, I think they're just showing in terms of, because as noted, the height limitation is 35 feet, and that there's a, in the built-in HDCP, there's a certain provision that a certain percentage can go above that for screening architectural elements, so just in terms of the total area of roof, it just helps to break it down to show that they're below those thresholds.
Okay, so if we included the other areas of deck that effectively serve as roof, the percentage would get even smaller?
Yes, that'd be correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is the, is it going to be exclusively valet parking, or will there be some self-parking as well?
Great question, there's a parking management plan, I believe it is a detachment three to your staff report this evening, I believe in the early-to-midday portions, there is envisioned to be some more self-parking components during non-peak times, and then transition into the afternoon and evenings, and I think, believe on all-day weekends and holidays, all day, but that's all laid out there, so yes, it's a kind of a combination, and that's, and I should just say about the parking management plan and how they've laid it out, it's a starting point in terms of how they envision based on similar types of uses, how they envision the parking being managed, and then obviously organically, as operations occur, they will adjust accordingly to avoid impacts on the surrounding area.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned briefly that there'll be a separate hostel operator. Is that, has that been clarified, is the operator going to have other, do they have other operations going, do they work well with the hotel operator, will that pose any problems?
I do not believe so, I, the applicant can speak in terms of, if he can announce any of the operators this evening, I know that there's been a number of negotiations with some experienced facilities, both on the hotel side, the restaurant, or I should say on all sides, the restaurant, hotel, and on the hostel, but I know that their operations, same as any type of mixed use, that they've envisioned, that... But I know that their operations, same as any type of mixed use, that they've envisioned that they'll all be compatible in their utilization and management.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, has the applicant expressed any thing about project timing? Are they wanting to, you know, get into plan check immediately and break ground or...
Nothing would make them happier than to get approval this evening and not be appealed to the Coastal Commission and hopefully get those plans in for plan check probably well before the end of the year.
So are, any vote by us does not have to go to Coastal Commission, only if it's appealed?
That's correct.
Okay. On condition thirty-two, trees planted as part of this project shall not impact any public views. How is that going to be determined or it kind of seems a little vague? Was that, was that discussed or...
So there is, as is noted in the staff report, the Pacific Coast Highway is a scenic highway. There's no particular, particular scenic views down this particular version of PCH, so there's no real issue there. What that's really referring to is there is a identified public, and I can actually probably, if I go all the way back to the beginning, I could probably show this very quickly. Right here, where that arrow is on, is the general plan approved only, that is the only public viewpoint in this area. And it looks right over the project site and you know, you have pretty spectacular, I mean, the main spectacular views, I'm not going to lie. When I went up there and looked, it's breathtaking looking out towards the harbor and north, towards the northern end of our community. And it really has minimal impacts in views towards PCH because you're really just looking at PCH in the neighborhood. So it's just making sure that there's no impact from the proposed landscaping, the trees in particular, that it doesn't, you know, create any problems. But at this time, staff sees no issues or potential issues. But again, it's one of those things that Coastal, we have all these trails, we have all these outlooks. We just want to make sure there is no impact, so we'll verify.
Well, I guess I'd...
If I may add, Commissioner, typically what we do is we look at the species of trees and how tall that they get and that's how we end up making sure it's compliant with that particular condition. So in other projects, we will be very particular in reviewing any trees that they select and looking to see at full maturity how tall they will be in order to make sure that they don't impact those views.
Okay, so, I guess I'm, it seems like any tree planted would impact a public view in some way, maybe for better or for worse. So I guess I'm not quite sure that I agree with the wording of this.
The identified public view from this position is out towards the ocean.
So public view is defined as...
There's an arrow actually in the general plan component for this, for that area that points toward that direction. So again, it's a standard condition as the Director of Community Development has stated. And we're not concerned generally, we'll definitely check it with the landscape plan. But at this point, I would say there's very high likelihood that will not be impactful on any public views.
Okay, great, thank you. Seems like on section D, there's a typo, prior to issuance of separate right-of-way permit. On condition ninety-one, it says prior to commencement of framing, certify the setbacks. Should that be prior to pouring foundation? Or did you consider...
I think that prior to commencement of framing, which means before they go forward with framing. So it's kind of the same thing, it says it's in the reverse, but you're right, that, you're correct, that that's when it will happen is at that foundation. It's before they move forward with framing. We've verified that the setbacks in the building is placed in the correct location.
Okay, I've seen it before where it says prior to pouring foundation, so they got to cert the state, cert the forms.
We recently, we recently updated some of our language on that issue, but yes, you are correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Condition ninety-six, applicant shall obtain a street improvement permit and complete all required street improvements. And I believe this is prior to building permit. Do we want them to have to complete everything prior to building permit or should they just complete the public works stuff prior to CFO?
What this, and it's not saying that it has to be completed, it's that they have to obtain a permit for those improvements. So I believe that it's, it's not required to be, complete all required street improvements with approved green plans and reports. That's a great question. I know that Matt Kunk with our engineering division is here and that was a conditional approval that came from the engineering division and they had worded it in that way. Perhaps that could be something you can, we can make him available.
So maybe Matt, if you could take a look at that. I mean, I'd be fine with permit prior to building permit and completion prior to CFO, makes more sense to me. And then lastly, is there anything in this project that, that, there was no conditions relative to CCNRs? There was something about a deed restriction. Is there anything in here that would require us to, or require them to have CCNRs?
No, sir, there's no map associated with the project.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Donner, do you want to...
Yes, sir, this is compliant with all the requirements and the vision for the development of this particular project site. Yes, sir. The architect presented the project, answered questions regarding the overall design, his design approach and you know, introduced the project to the residents so that way they were aware of it. The steps that they had tried to take to make sure that all the parking and development standards were met and that would hopefully, you know, their efforts didn't be as least impactful, as I said, to their, to them and to their views in particular. As I said, while we do not protect private views, they, he walked through their process in trying to be conscious, conscience of their potential concerns. So just walk through that and the components of the project. It's contained within the parking structure of the development, all the, other than the employee parking as it's shown as part of the tandem to provide really specific employee parking to manage the employees because that's much easier to do in a tandem situation prior to valet occurring. It'll just be contained within the parking structure and it's all open parking to provide for all of the facilities. Absolutely, sir.
You, Commissioner Noble?
Just a few simple questions. You talk about a retaining wall measuring twenty-four feet in height. Is that the existing nail wall that you're referring to or is that someplace else?
It's, it's a great question and I just, it is actually that step and you can see it here in plan view. It's this wall right here that's set back about seventy-five plus feet from the property line plus another eight. So it's almost eighty feet from the right-of-way. And it's that step up that you saw in the elevations. I'm sorry, the computer is having a bit of a lag. You can't even see it from that perspective. It's going to be only really visible for a brief moment along the street of Green Lantern because you're going to have these stairs here. It's also treated with the same block, so the same stone veneer is going to be on this wall right here. This is the wall in question. And also the landscaping along the frontage there. So staff and the applicant has worked to make sure that it's an aesthetic improvement, that it wasn't just treated as a gray cinder block wall that was treated with architectural features, that the building has primarily will screen it because of the exiting requirements, but that there was also landscaping in that area as well.
All right. And then when you were talking about noise, you were talking about unmitigated noise with no wall?
Uh huh.
Is that in regards to the feature wall that was added? So it was unmitigated, but they've gone and added an additional wall to be able to keep the noise down in the area?
Actually, it refers to as if the, if the neighbors, it actually has to do with the receptor. So if the neighbor, for whatever reason, decided to pull out their, their back fence, so it was just open to the street, that's what that means.
So it's already assuming that this feature wall is already there?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then my last one is, are there going to be any revisions to Green Lantern, the flow of traffic there at all with this project?
No, there is not.
Okay.
The only revisions to Green Lantern is going to be some sidewalk improvements to enhance pedestrian environment.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, thank you. Of course, there's probably a lot of concern about, you know, this project. And it looks like a very good project, a unique project and one that would suit well for where it is. But there's concern about the headlands and the deep cut and the cliff where there's actually, people walk all the time in the headlands. And of course, we've got all our valuables, endangered species of plants and animals. And so if you could go into more detail about this wall, is it going to be flush with the cliff? And how high and does, and how high does it go? Will it reach the top right where the walkway is when we have that little, you know, string that protects people from falling off the cliff? Because this is, this is a serious issue for people of Dana Point. Everybody, you know, loves having the headlands there. And it's, it's so wonderful to be able to take your families to, you know, hike those little trails up there and see what is all to offer. And it's kind of concerning unless we can feel that all the steps have been taken to mitigate any kind of destruction to the pathways and to the hills there themselves.
Great, great questions. So the nail wall, as seen as it is today, will remain associated with the project as it is holding up that, that backside. As you can see in your, in your, I put this up for the benefit of everyone in the room, but if you probably might be able to see a little bit better in your, in your eleven-by-seventeen package. The project itself gets the closest, gets about within ten feet at this far location close to Green Lantern. But a majority of the project is more like twenty-plus feet away. And actually, this whole back area is going to be landscaped and is going to provide an area back here that is, you know, meant to improve the facility because in essence, you have hotel rooms back here looking back at this area. So they're looking to put in landscaping and different things to enhance and improve that back area. But the nail wall will remain as a component of this, of this preliminary, this review for planning commission. They did submit an initial geotechnical review of the project, which was reviewed by our geotechnical staff based on those recommendations and the components of the project and with the nail. And they also looked at it and reviewed it as compared to the foundational components of the nail wall as well. And it was the site, everyone was very comfortable that the site is very developable, what they're proposing is very reasonable and will protect the environmental, the sensitive habitat area, will not impact anything, it will be set back appropriate distance away.
Could you, could you describe to me what a, it's a nail wall you're speaking of?
Yeah, that's what it's called. That'd be a great question also for Mr. Matt Kunk because that's an engineering term and I'm just a planner.
But Sean, why don't you show the picture of the nail wall because you have it in one of those. But before you move, go back to plan view, please. Why don't you show the staircase that exists, that is adjacent to this site, that you can still access the trail, so...
So this is Shoreline Drive, as the director said, and you can see here that this is the access point onto the trail as it exists today that will remain and parking will be provided for it through the project and steps up and follows us along. And you can see here that it is set back still, doesn't impact where the wall is. And then the development itself is set back, at least as I said, a majority of the way, twenty-plus feet away from the, from the face of that wall. And continues around and then heads over towards that lookout point in which I showed earlier in the, in the aerial.
Okay, thank you for my colleague for bringing, I had seen this picture, but what is a nail wall made out of? I mean, I don't know.
Nails, maybe?
Nails and walls. Okay, we're done.
Good evening, commissioners. Essentially, the soil nail wall is, I don't know, can you bring up that picture? It's a, it's a mechanism of essentially nails. They're just really big, long steel rods and they are driven into the side of, in this case, the hillside. And the, they're similar to what's called a tieback, which is at a steeper angle. But as those, as those tiebacks and those long rods kind of flatten out in a, in an application like this, they're more nailed in. So there's a series of probably, you know, hundreds of anchors that are driven into this hillside to stabilize it. And then once the stabilization and anchors are sufficiently torqued and tensioned to remain in place indefinitely, they, they, they spray or shoot concrete on the face of the wall to cover it and, and the rock natural type wall that you see today is the, is the remaining final wall configuration.
So, so it follows, I'm looking at this picture, it follows the contours of the cliff where we would see those, the trails and people go up there and...
Correct.
So, okay. And is there a life expectancy to, you know, is there, is there any reason to believe that at some point this would deteriorate?
No.
We won't be around, is that what you're saying?
No, the typical life expectancy for this would be a typical of any structure, which would be, you know, in the seventy-five to a hundred-year expectancy. So, and these will continue, they continue to be monitored. And, you know, we have staff, both, both parks and open space staff and public works staff up there all the time, you know, monitoring the, the conditions of the open space as well as, as these walls and the drainage associated with that.
Okay, as long as I have you there. And again, what's the distance between the nail wall and the wall that's going to be built, the twenty-four-foot wall?
So the twenty-four-foot wall tees into the development. So let me take you back to a, you can see from the site plan perspective. You can see that this wall, this wall right here, that's the twenty-four-foot wall we were discussing that's set back seventy-five feet. It tees in to it. So it's not necessarily at it, it tees in and comes out towards the projects, to the, to the hostel building. And that's what separates because this is higher than this, so it's the transitional, in terms of holding back the structure and the subterranean space.
Okay, you've answered my questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, see here, I got a bunch of questions, probably...
If you don't mind, I'm sorry, just to address Commissioner McCann's previous condition of approval. Public Works is ultimately just concerned with the sidewalk and the pedestrian activity being, remaining open. So whether they want to do the public improvements at the end of the project or at the beginning of the project, I think we would be fine with any revisions, just as long as we put a caveat on the condition that the pedestrian access will remain open along the streets there.
Thank you. All right, Sean, I think some of these questions may be repetitive from that email I sent to you earlier today, but I just want to make sure I'm covering all the bases here. As it relates to the six spaces required by the plan, is, you were saying they're just provided throughout? Anybody can park anywhere? There's six that are dedicated, but in no particular order?
Yes, sir.
So, okay. I guess on going on with that thinking, what I'd like to hear about is how we address valet parking, you know, guest parking and then open public parking that's not specifically delineated and how we ensure that the, A, the six spaces are available for the public, but that this doesn't turn into the neighborhood parking garage as well. So if the applicant can address that as it relates to their parking plan, that'd be great. On the noise study, I had a question relative to entertain, live entertainment outdoors. Is that a permitted, are they allowed to have live entertainment as part of this approval?
Not as part of this approval, no. If the restaurant, a restaurant is a permitted use. If they are looking to do any kind of alcohol or potentially live entertainment component of the project, they have, would have to come in at that time once an operator is selected.
Okay.
And so otherwise, the, those, this will be reviewed again by the planning commission.
Because they will need a conditional use permit.
Okay, for the outdoor uses, okay. Thank you. Do you know if the parking will have a fee associated with it? Is it free parking throughout or is it guests, guests pay a certain amount?
Yeah, the applicant has indicated that the valet will be free.
So there's no parking charge at all, even if you're a guest?
That's my understanding though, in terms of guest operational component. That's a little bit of a different question that we had discussed earlier. And again, that's an operational question best for the applicant.
Perfect. And you said the valet's free. I want to, the, the thing that I'm trying to understand is how... is how the operation of parking works with and without the valet. I think your, the, the response I got originally was that the, there's a plan in place that this is essentially, you know, a starting point. I want to kind of get a sense of, in a snapshot of time, what that actual starting point is relative to how the guests get into the parking spaces and are able to leave their cars there during those hours when the, the valet operator comes online. So there's these breaks in operation that seem, to seem to have a potential for conflict that could essentially, if not manage properly, take these tandem spaces and make them useless. Because you'll have a car that's stuck in front. So when we talk through parking of the applicants here, I'd like to ask them a few specific questions relative to that.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, and then, on the hostel. So when you go and look at the elevation, if you look at that first, the aerial view from Green Lantern and PCH, you see the hostel down in the bottom corner there.
Let me get to it, I apologize. There we go.
Okay, so when looking at that, it appears as if the front elevation, there's quite a bit of glass along what would I guess be the south elevation. And then on the west elevation, actually, that would be the east. So the, the east appears to have glass. The north is, is a blank wall. So there's no openings and no glass on that wall. And then if you go to the next, to the elevation sheet, which would be the view for the south elevation, along the, uh, south elevation in the area where, and it's based on the floor plans. It looks like there's one bedroom that has glass along the southern elevation. And then the rest are buried behind the staircase and that flat wall. So I guess my concern is that we've, it feels like an afterthought to some extent that you're going to have eight people in these rooms in bunk beds, and we have no artificial light, yet we've got huge balconies. And I know it's, it's supposed to be cost-conscious, but I, being cost-conscious doesn't mean we, we bury them into a dark cave. So I want to talk through how we ensure that the guests of the hostel have adequate light, but also more specifically space. If you look at the floor plans, some of these dimensions, they're not dimensioned, but if you take the, the plan scale and you extrapolate that off, if you look at on floor two, room, I think it's three. One mistake in here by memory. I can't find it.
So I think to perhaps start answering some components of your question.
I'm sorry, room two.
Yeah.
And that room is, has at the, at best a 13-foot dimension going one way. And so when you do the math, you can't fit even four beds in there dimensionally. If you're, if we're going to get eight, you know, four bunk beds in here, the rooms have to be much bigger. And so what I don't want to do is let this slip through as part of the project, given that it was, it took up a considerable amount of space in the headlands plan, specifically what is required in Planning Area Four relative to the hostel. And so maybe the applicant can get to that. And we can talk about some minimum square footages per person, type of, what's going to be located in there, whether they're going to have a kitchen, laundry facilities, you know, kind of the particular things that you'd look for in a hostel. I would want to hear about if we're going to be approving this. And then the last would be, do you know if the, if the guests of the hostel have access to any of the amenities? Or is it particularly cut off, you know, purposely?
They're separate operators, they're separate operations, so they are. Other than parking, that the parking facilities are shared there, the amenities are separate.
All right, and I think that's it for me. So if I, if my fellow commissioners don't mind, if the applicant could come up and answer some of these specific questions, and then we'll open the public hearing. That would be, yeah, okay.
Hello, Mike Son. My name is Todd Stoughton-Burl. And my office is in Laguna Hills, California. I lived in Laguna Beach since 1969. I've been looking at this site most of my life. And I, I have a little show we can do. I'd probably do it in about 10 minutes. It's the same show we showed the Regatta people, which I think goes into the project in a lot more detail and may answer a lot of your questions. So if I could rag through that real quickly, and then we can have some questions that might help. And I think what it does is gives them a little more robust idea about what the design is on the project, where it came from, and why it is, and those kinds of answers. So can we do the room a little darker? Because it's kind of hard to see this. Is that, is that?
We can see it up here on our monitors.
Yeah.
Here, but for the audience.
You can't see, you know, and I, yeah. And I'm going to be using a little pointer here too, which you guys won't be able to see because it's on your, your screen. So you might have to do a little back and forth on that, okay? Why don't you go to the next slide? What I'll just do is go like this, Sean. Yeah, and then we could just move. This picture is taken more or less of the site about 1923. It's before the bay was built. When I was younger, I, I worked on this, this project that was right here. It's the, it's the sea base in the marine bases. One of my projects when I was a lot younger. Okay? In designing the project, we use this as the guideline. What we're thinking is this project that you're seeing today is really the realization of all of the decisions that were made 10, 15 years ago. And we studied this book very carefully and sought to be able to design a project that would really manifest a lot of the desires and the meaning that was agreed upon in the Headlands book. And also provide access to the open space and a place for a visitor center and a new entry to the city, in a sense. This project's going to be very visible, and it's right at the entry to the city. And I think it wants to be a project everybody in the city is proud of, that people in the city visit. Maybe your children have their weddings here at this project. Maybe we could have a glass of Chardonnay there when, after it's finished, and look at the view. Sean, maybe, next picture. Next one. Next picture. This is your little brochure, which I think really spells out the opportunity to visit this wonderful view, view site here. And I think it's really a treasure that this piece of property, which is Dana Point, it's the point at Dana, was left for everybody to enjoy. The project that we're doing right here will provide access and, and, and an ability to visit the site. Okay, Sean? Okay? I don't know how to do it a little faster. These are some of the manuals that we commissioned to do the site. There is a water quality control plan, a traffic plan, a noise plan, and also a plan that seeks to explain how the parking will be managed in the process. And I'll give, when I get to those slides, I'll go in that in a little more detail. One of the things the project's going to do is make a connection from a visitor center here and an ability to walk down a sidewalk across the street and get onto this pedestrian connection. A connection that really doesn't exist today. So this project provides that connection. Okay? This nail wall, it's another word for, it's a, it's a tieback wall. There's another way to explain it. It has tiebacks, you basically drill into the wall and you hold it. The project that we're considering is about 10 feet lower than the top of this hill. And so the project that we're putting in here really kind of just fits that space and kind of emulates what used to have been there when the hill was there. It stayed, it steps down from the height of the hill towards PCH. And, and we've designed the project so that the people up here in the Regatta neighborhood, well, their, their views as they exist today would not be affected. Okay, and I'll get into that in more detail. This is kind of an aerial site of the site, and here's your nail wall as it goes up. It's about almost 40 feet and within a couple places. This site is, at this level here is 220 feet above sea level. And right here, it's 200 feet above sea level. In other words, there's a drop of 20 feet from this, this spot right here to that spot. A drop of 20 feet is like two stories of a residential house. So this is a very sloping site. Also, the PCH in this, in this area here is somewhat flat here, and then it takes a pretty good dive right there. And so this intersection is, 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 is problematic for coming out this way. And that's why it's been closed off. However, you can enter the site this way, and there's a signal here where you can enter the site that way. And what we felt was important to do is design a site so no matter how you got into it, you couldn't get confused or lost or turned around. So however you enter this project, doesn't matter. That's very important, especially if it's a hotel. You know, if you arrive at a hotel and all of a sudden you arrive on a wrong level, you can't get to the other level. This, this project doesn't have any of that. You, any way you arrive in it, you arrive at, at a valet place or a place where you can drop off or park. So the nail wall, you can just kind of see it behind it, back here. This deck right here, that height there is 14-foot clear. So you can drive a truck underneath this swimming pool. All of the service for the project is below this deck right here where the restaurant is. And there is a service elevator that goes from the, this service level that goes directly into the restaurant and also down to a storage area. This youth hostel here, and I, and I think you're right. When we, we drew there, there's a couple windows that were missing, you know, on the elevation. And I'll get to that on the outside. We're, we're not designing the restaurant at the moment. That's just a tenant space, the way we've set it up. And we've kind of approached the hostel in the same way. We've talked to a lot of operators, and we've designed a facility that accommodate each of them. But they're all waiting very, very carefully about this meeting. If the project's approved, then the owner would probably make, make their agreement with those operators. Also, the owners are in New York, I think today, working out the last deals with the hotel operator. I can't tell you who it is, but if you imagine going to New York, making a deal with the best hotel chain there is, I wonder what that would be. This is classified as a boutique hotel. Its price range is probably about $450 a night, $350 to $450 a night, as opposed to the Ritz-Carlton, some of the other resort hotels, which are much higher in their room rates. Also, the project, there's no interior space. This is more of an exterior hotel. When you're in this plaza area or deck area, which is designed to be flexible, you, this is outdoors, and you enter your room from an outdoor space. Okay? Next. I think Sean's done a wonderful job kind of telling you how this project fits on the site. By the way, working with the city has really been a joy. I, I, I think the project's much better because of Sean's input and some of the engineers that we've, we've talked to in our several meetings. We've come up with actual positive ideas that I think make this project better. And I'll point out a few of them. And that's a good sign. Sometimes when we work with cities, things don't work out, you know, things get worse. But I think on this one, everything has gotten better. You can enter the project from either side. Next slide. Yeah. The, if I enter here, where the blue arrows are, I would come to this area in the middle, which is flat. And I can either unload my passenger or valet my car. If it is a, early in the morning and there's no valet surface, I can self-park in the process anywhere I want. If I entered the project coming from PCH this way, it's the same, same way, I can, I can valet my car, drop off a car, take out a passenger. Or maybe this is a taxi. A taxi comes in here, drops off his passenger. And this area is at the same level as the plaza. And across from that is a sunken garden. So when you enter underneath the building, there's not a feeling that you're going underground because you're daylighted right at this point to the plaza, and you're daylighted to this garden, that's this grotto that's down below. This is the kind of ceiling we anticipate in the garage. There's no pipes, no ducts. It's a, it'd be, it's called an Alcan ceiling. It's a system that is wired in, just kind of like this ceiling, except it's made out of material that's not flammable. Any of you have been to South Coast Plaza, Crystal Court? And you go underneath the mall, there's an Alcan ceiling all under that mall. And it's all, you don't see any pipes. You know, I did that project a while ago. It's the same idea, little different thing. This, this little light well over here, which is where the bicycles are, this, imagine that being a garden, okay? And then on the other side, you have, you're daylighted to PCH. So when you enter underneath the deck into this area, you're daylighted. You don't feel like you're in a subterranean garage. Okay? And you're, you're greeted there. I'm going to get into the, how the parking actually works in a little bit. But there's a place for the valet to receive you. They can take your car. If you want to self-park, you can unload, you can go self-park. And then right where you parked your car, say where these guys are, if you can imagine right here, that would be the deck, the pla, that plaza that goes right to PCH. So you don't feel like, again, you're underground. So I've dropped out my car, and this arrow's pointing, I'm going right to the, right to this plaza. And then in here, we're, we're considering, this would be the information station. And we haven't given this a lot of thought, and we really want to work on the city. But I think what would be wonderful, it would be an interactive, digital kind of presentation in the space where a person could be at a little object like this, which should be digital, and they can ask different questions or point to different things, and different maps can come up, different information about the, the views from the public areas and from the, the preserve. All could be talked about at that little station. Wouldn't be manned by a person, but I think it could be manned by an interactive digital system. Also, inside the lobby, this is the hotel lobby right here. And there's a stair that goes up to the deck. There's no way to get to the deck without going through this lobby. Well, there's exit ways, but all the exit ways have doors on them with no hardware from the outside. So nobody can go from the outside and get to the deck without going through this secured area where the, where the hotel lobby is. Also provided are bathrooms that are for the public. So public people can go and interact with this thing here. They could park their cars, they could go, go walk on the, on the trails. We're not doing anything to the trails. The only thing we're doing is providing a link and the ability to park to get to the trails. Okay, next picture. This is like a, a feature that may be in the, in the. This is like a feature that may be in the public little courtyard, like, you know, waterfall fountain. And if I went in from there into the hotel lobby, this is the experience you would have, it'd be a lobby like this with the doors open. And inside the lobby would be, you know, fireplace, a little bug. But this is a small hotel, it's only 57 rooms. If I went the other direction, right here, I'd be entering the lower portion of the restaurant. The restaurant is a two-story space, and then there's a stair right here, which gives me access. You'd be greeted by a receptionist down at this level and be escorted up to where your dining is. I can't announce the name of the restaurant again, but the restaurant they're talking, we're talking to is the number one restaurant in Orange County. It's been rated the number one culinary restaurant in Orange County, that's what I can say. Okay, so this is the upstairs portion of the restaurant, and this is that glass wall that you can see from the outside. So as you drive by, you see into the lower space and the upper space, and this is like a little balcony that looks down into the space below. That's a stair that comes up to the 4,000 square foot restaurant. The kitchen's in this area, there's a bar area. And then this area here is the deck that's related to the restaurant. All of this deck area is related to the hotel. And for the people from the restaurant, can't go into this area. There's a door right here, and there's a little gate right there. There's a little bridge across the pool that's provided so that waiters can serve people in this area here, but you can't, restaurant patients can't just walk over there. Here's a view from this space, we could go these quickly, so you just, you know, because you've shown these. This is the view that, the way we created this, we took actual photographs of the bay and then oversuperimposed it in our computer, how the views would look. It's a little close-in view. It's anticipated that the restaurant would have outdoor seating, living room areas with, you know, like little tables with possible fireplaces. It'd be a great place to kind of meet your friends and also enjoy the view, okay? Again, this is that little bridge, and there's a glass gate. This is all cantilever glass that keeps the pool. You see, the patrons here, they can see the pool, but they can't get to it because they can't get past that glass. The deck is made in, it's a floating deck. It's really important for us to make the deck flat. If you've ever been outdoors and you have to slope things to drain, everything's kind of sloping to a drain, and all the furniture doesn't quite match and everything. There's a system that we use where we, the lower concrete floor is sloped, and that takes the drain. And all the water goes right through this floor, through the cracks of it, and goes right, and then is collected below it. So the deck always stays dry, and it's always flat. That's the deck I'm talking about here. It's kind of, we wanted the experience to be like a ship's deck. You know, you go out in the ship, and you join, and there's furniture there, and you have lounge equipment, okay? This is a little detail of the pool. You know, it sounds fairly exotic, but it's pretty simple to build. It's a piece of three-inch glass that they use in aquariums. And you just bolt that together, and you can see through it, makes a nice feature. It's just a lap pool, it's very small, okay? Another feature of the deck is this fireplace. It seemed to be really slow, I mean, I want to, we just, yeah, okay. And then the next picture. Wish I had a button here and I could go faster, there. So, you know, on the deck has an outdoor fireplace, and it's all part of the experience. And then upstairs, this is a deck that goes around, and there's a little stair down this part, and these are the units upstairs. Here's a typical unit. Like this. The units are 28 feet deep and about 14 feet on center wide. It's not a huge room, but it's not real small. And they'll be well-appointed with large television sets and, you know, stone and glass. This is the roof plan right here. This area right here is where the mechanical equipment would be stored for the units. This green area here is the vegetated deck that's above the hotel lobby. It has this kind of feeling. So the neighbors across the street, when you're looking at the project, will be looking down partly at this vegetated deck. And there's a whole system of how that's made, it comes in parts. So you can just put this together like a little piece apart, okay? This is, this little trellis system is as movable awnings in that area around where the fireplace is. So, you know, it could be shaded or kept sunny depending on how the weather is. Okay, this is the lower level of the parking. During the regular operation of the project is, let me just say this, the management of the parking is somewhat complicated because you have three separate uses, and you have the possibility of special functions here. There will always be a monitor on site dealing with the parking. And then, when valet comes into operation, usually about 5 o'clock, the more people will arrive. But all of the tandem spaces will be set aside, so when the valet's not in operation, they put a cone in all these spaces right here so you can't park in them. Also, the employees are encouraged to park in an agreement of how they operate it in this area right here. That's in the lowest level of the parking structure, so that leaves all the other parking for it. And by the way, there's city code. Calculated within the city code is employee parking, okay? So when we say we've provided, was it 127 spaces, what was it? 130 standard spaces. Those spaces also, per the code, park the employees. Well, we want this parking structure to be flexible. So if there's a special event, you say there's maybe a wedding going on, or a party, or when my dad becomes 100 years old, we're going to have a party for him here. Then, so the valet may take an operation earlier and then cordon off the cars, you know, in anticipation of a larger group coming later. And the parking structure has that ability to expand and contract. And say a person that's self-parked during the day, those areas would be cored off to where they're self-parked, and it wouldn't be managed, okay? And they have the ability of setting, you know, 30 cars for that, or 40 cars, or 20 cars. And it's up to the valet, depending upon how the operation and what the demand is, how to set that up. If a person, say, leaves their car, and they're staying late, and the valet goes at 1 o'clock in the morning, and they're still there, well, the valet is, you're required to give the keys to the valet. This is pretty standard, and they put it in a valet box. Well, if somebody's still there, then the valet takes the keys and gives them to the desk clerk, and then you go find them. No valet leaves the site where there's tandem cars, because he has the keys to the car, and he can move any of those tandem cars out of the way, so a person can self-exit, you know, past those times. There's that opportunity. Say there's a big wedding going to happen here, well, then they might start the valet, you know, from the start of the day, so they have control of all the cars and all the keys that particular day, and that's probably on a weekend. But during the week, you know, say, from 8 o'clock until 3 o'clock in the afternoon of a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, there'd be a lot of self-parking, and there's a lot of room for this. Because even in the calculation, we didn't even apply the ability to share cars. I mean, say 9 o'clock at night or 10 o'clock at night, those six cars that were set aside for the people to go enjoy the preserve, well, those cars, they're not there. And if a person comes to the hotel and they also eat in the restaurant, never already parked, that car is, you know, shared. Also, people come to the hotel a lot by taxi, and those cars aren't even counted. Also, with the tandem spaces, it gives us the ability, say you have a big van or a big limo that shows up, what do you do with that? Well, we can park it in one of these spaces. So we've anticipated a lot of different ways of this thing operating, and there's a lot of different ways to handle unique situations. And what allows us to do that is that the parking structure is two-way, it's not one-way. There's no way you can get in and get lost, and you can always find your way out. And it's all painted, and a nice experience. And even in this lowest level right here, that's daylighted and with grates from above. That little area that we're making green, so that, see, when you have your cars down below, all this, this is daylighted so that you don't feel, again, like you're underground. And you really are, because you're like 20 feet underground. Okay, go ahead. Next. Also, there's a basement provided. Okay, so this part, this project is 35% overparked, according to municipal code, updating a point. Not considering any shared abuses cars. So it gives us lots of opportunities, so even if you're valeting, you have lots of extra cars for people to self-park, and they're just cording off those different areas, and there'd be signs to show how those are used, okay? We went into this a lot more detail because, again, this is the parking that's provided. 178 cars, and what you're required is a... Okay, this section shows the difference between this level here is at 220 feet above sea level, and this plate over here is at 200. So there's a 20-foot drop. The way that's done is we come off of Shoreline Drive, onto a driveway, and then this is a parking ramp that you park on, and it's 5%. Where you come to where the lobby is, it's flat. It's required to be flat for handicap use, and that's where we have our handicap car. Well, actually, you're allowed 2%. So there's a 2% slope in here, which is perceptibly flat. And again, it becomes 5%, and then it comes down here, and you have a driveway that exits. And so by the time you come here, go all the way through the project, you've gone down 20 feet. This is the pool right here, and this, so, but you can see when you get down to here, you've got quite a bit of clearance. So if a truck kind of backs around in here, there's no possibility they could ever hit it. This lower is the lower parking, so it comes around, and it mirrors the upper one until it ends at this point. This area right here is that grotto, you know, basically the underground garden against the wall. This is the PCH. When I, well, okay, can you go back to that one? See, when I arrived right here, that's my valet meeting area, this whole space is more or less the same height. This is an elevation from Street of the Green Lantern. This is from PCH, okay? Keep going. As we go around the building, this is the elevation from Shoreline Drive. Now, one of the things we try to do on Shoreline Drive is minimize the height of the building at that location, so it's more copacetic with the residential area. So, and we'll get to another exhibit that shows the height, but this is actually about 12 feet below what is permitted to be height. And this is the stone we're talking about using. This is essentially the backside of the project that looks at the garden wall. It's a kind of a tough spot for a hotel because there's not a lot of views out of this hotel that look at the ocean because you've got this mountain in the way. About 50% of the rooms have some kind of view, and other ones just look, you know, kind of at this garden wall. And then, their amenity is really the courtyard that you go out into, okay? And we're talking about glass, handrails everywhere, okay? Okay, so to cap this up, there's that vegetated garden right here, and that's the upper level of rooms that look at that. This is the deck, that's the restaurant. And then this is the lower drive, okay, go ahead. Now, on the hostel, I think Eric, you were very perceptive into, you know, we haven't really sorted out exactly how the inside of the hostel works, even though you see it's a specified, you know, amount of space designated by the postal commission report, which is 4,050 square feet, which then allows for the 40 beds. How those are laid out is somewhat flexible, but Sean gave me a call earlier. We sent you a bunch of images, and we can get into a separate dialogue on the technical issues with that. But it's essentially a two-story house, about 4,000 square feet. Okay. I think Sean went into this pretty well. This is the elevation from PCH, this is the other elevation. As you can see, the project's way below what's permitted, the permitted height. There's also a different way to calculate the height, which is from the bottom of the, or the ceiling of the basement. And actually, that's a little more severe way of calculating it, so we did it both ways to make sure that it's all within the height limit. Okay, go ahead. Okay, so we're very concerned about these, and to be a good neighbor, we wanted to, you know, not impede these people's view. And so, I took it upon myself to climb up this hill, and stood at about this place. It took a picture, which Sean will show you here. Which is, this is the picture of the site from that spot. What was important to us is that if whatever we build in here doesn't really impede this kind of horizon line, you know, so that you still see the horizon, how can we fit it in? That's one of the reasons why the building was stepped back. And so we took our computer, okay? And, oh, I see you don't have Windows 10, do you? So it doesn't, okay. So we did a computer layout, and then we did a line drawing over that. And then, that is the realistic view of the building as it would be put into that space. This wall right here, we think, is very important to the project, it's doing several things. One is, it's kind of, it's tilted to be visible from the street, but it's also there to block any sound that comes off the porch up into the neighborhood. So it kind of is a shield, so any kind of sound or screaming or anything that might be happening in there is really blocked by that wall. This area here is the center courtyard, which is this courtyard right here. And that's it, I can answer any question you want, I hope.
All right, so let me go to my questions here on this parking. So I assume I'm a guest. And let me get oriented here. I pull in, and I want to park my car on the second level. I think it's the second level, P2, which I believe you accessed from Green Lantern, is that correct?
Well, you can get to P2 or P1 from either way.
Well, you would have to, how do you get to P, no, I'm talking P2. P2.
This is P2 right here, right?
Right, so you access off of...
If I came in off of Shoreline Drive, I came in up above here, and I drove through, and I was either greeted by the valet and gave up my car upstairs, or I self-park, and I just keep on driving this way, and I come around here, and I come and find the place and the place I want.
Okay, so...
If I drove in from Green Lantern, I can either drive in up here and out that way, or I can come in and park in place right by this elevator and be right up at the deck.
Okay.
If I had a bicycle, I, there's bicycle parking, motorcycle parking right here. Also, these are handicap stalls. And the garage is, it is minimum height of eight foot four, so handles handicap vans no matter where you put them.
Okay, so I pull in from Green Lantern and go to P2. Now, I thought I read somewhere in the staff report that we were going to, you guys were going to allocate specific... Now, I thought I read somewhere in the staff report that we were gonna, you guys were gonna allocate specific spaces for the hotel rooms, but from what I understand, talking to Sean, it's gonna be a free-for-all at this point?
Well, I don't think free-for-all is the right way to describe it. It's a managed parking facility depending upon the day and the demand and what's going on. And so, you can, you can self-park. I mean, it's like entering any big hotel and there'll be a sign, you could valet and there'll be a sign, self-park.
Right, but you're not, the valet's not open every day. It's only open certain hours of the day, right?
Well, it depends on if there's a function. So, if you have a big function, you know, on Wednesday, you know, and then the valet would start its operation then and they would start managing it. The ownership is, they think there's one person there that's dealing with the parking structure at all times because depending upon the time of day to manage it, that person would be setting up cones. In other words, you'd say anticipating a bunch of valet tonight, you know, cordon off that whole section so that, you say, you just have thirty people that are self-parking. They do their self-parking, mostly on the upper level. And then, he's, he's saved all those parking spaces for later. Employees, depending if they're working on the restaurant or working in the hotel, would use a lot of the tandem spaces. But see, a lot of the hotel employees, they come early in the morning, they're out there by three. And so, they, you know, so they would manage that that way. And that'd be up to the parking manager exactly how it's done.
Okay, so, let me go, let me narrow down my question because I don't think I'm getting to it quick enough. You look at P-two and you go to the area that says employee parking and it says ten tandem cars. In your parking count, the spaces that are in front of the tandem space, those are considered standard stalls.
Right.
So, if somebody has parked in the tandem stall and they don't know the other person, there's no valet, how do they use that standard space?
Well, they don't because those are either been coned off or, I mean, you've gone to parking facilities where it's in the middle of the day but they're anticipating a nighttime group. And what they'll do is they'll rope off a whole bunch of car spaces and they say this is for valet. And you've got a lot of cars here to work with. So, they can do it at, in different places depending on what they anticipate the load to be. And, you know, it's Saturday night, you know, the restaurant might be really big. Sunday night restaurant, Sunday night, the hotel's pretty empty usually. So, all of these considerations will be taken in place and they just manage and move the cars around in the garage by the cone technique.
Okay, so, again, let me ask the exact same question. If there's a car in the tandem space, how does somebody use the space behind them if they're not an employee and there's no valet, which is the standard space?
Well, they can't, they can't, they can't park there unless they give their keys to the valet.
Right, that's my question. And how, so, we're counting, at least in my, if I, if I do the math, the tandem spaces are the spaces that are in front of the standard spaces, which are the required spaces?
No, think about it the reverse, I think.
Yeah.
That this is the tandem here and what I think...
No, I understand how these operate, Sean, so let me, let me finish my thought. These say employee parking, but there's no, there's, nobody's managing the space and we're gonna encourage employees to park in the tandem space.
Parking, this parking structure will be managed...
I'm not asking for a response at this point. I'm trying to finish my question, so if you could just bear with me here. There, these are noted as employee parking on the plan. Okay, there's, and I'll count them just for your benefit. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. There's ten tandem spaces and then behind that are ten standard spaces, which are part of your hundred-and-twenty-nine required spaces. If you are requiring people to park in the tandem and there's vehicles in there, how do you manage that? That's an unmanaged process. And if there's a car parked there and I don't know whose car that is, I'm not gonna park there. And so, you end up losing a space in the process of gaining, of thinking you're gaining a space.
Okay, let me, we start, can I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Number one, the city code, within your city code, employee spaces are already cooked into that number. Is that correct?
Correct. Without the additional tandem spaces, this project meets the minimum code requirement, which includes all uses.
Right. So, the way we conceive of this, this area in the basement of the garage, this, we were encouraging the employees to park. The employees would have an employee plan amongst themselves between the restaurant employees, the hotel employees, and whatever employees may be in the hostel. So, they, they know their space and they know how they can park and they can go behind it. Now, if, if in a high-operation notion, you can't park in the tandem behind a car without giving your keys to the valet. So, valet always has control of the keys. So, if he's there all night or even come three o'clock in the morning, you'd go to the motel desk, get your key and then leave. And the valet, if he saw any kind of a problem there, he would move one of the cars so no tandem car would be stuck behind another car.
Okay, so if you park in the standard space during the day when there's no valet, how does, how do you then use the tandem space?
Well, you put a, when you, when you don't have the need for the tandem space, they put a cone in the... They put a cone in this, in the forward space, so you can't park there, you just park in the backseat. There's a few tandem spaces upstairs, too.
No, I understand.
Same idea.
Okay.
But you've got so many cars, you know, your, your, your demand is real sloppy onto what, how you can manage that. There's a lot of different ways to do it. But standard operation from a, from a valet is that after a certain period, you're required to give all your keys to the valet so that if he needs to move cars. Because another thing that the, the project allows is the valet in the aisle. So, they can park in the aisle under, and the rule there is that you can move one car to get one car. However, that would work, okay? So, a valet has the keys and so he has a number, he fits the car, he knows where that is. He can move one car to get one car. Can't move two cars to get one car, just one. And they have that opportunity for an extra twenty cars. But again, that's just way over above than the requirement. And the only time I would use that is on, you know, special rare occasions, you know, where the, the project may get a, you know, a lot of people coming.
Okay. Thank you, that's, that's all I had.
Yeah. And the valet stand is in that flat area right below the plaza. So, he's like right next to the hotel lobby.
Okay. Great, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Any other questions?
Commissioners?
Yeah.
Commissioner, turn your mic, your mic.
You're gonna have a hotel operator, a youth hostel operator, a parking manager, and the restaurant operation.
Yeah.
So, so the, the functionality then is the accountability to the city. Who is that?
Well, that's a good question. Well, you'd have, the, the ownership owns the whole property, okay? So, the California Hotels, that's the name that they use, would be the...
If I, if I may interject, the applicant is the owner, so the conditions of approval, the burden of fulfilling those is with the ownership. So, the ownership is responsible or accountable to the city and it's their job to manage all of their operators.
Okay.
Right. And there might be a fifth person, there might be a caterer come here once in a while, too. And we've, we've provided for that. There's a way to, you know, you could put a forty-foot truck right in here, shielded behind, completely off the street and it can service and do that function as well.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, quick question. On, at the street level, it says there's a large open-to-below area behind the rest... At the street level, there's a large open-to-below area shown on the plans behind the restaurant lobby, kind of check-in stand. I'm curious, why is that truly just open to below, to like the parking beneath it? Why is that so large? Was it to keep the square footage of the building inside the maximum allowed?
Let me try to understand. Whoops, lost everything. Are you talking about this portion right here?
I'm talking about the, the white part right dot, exactly.
Yeah, well, that's a, that's just high volume. According to the agreement, we've already built thirty-five thousand of, square feet of gross building area. And that's what we have, is gross building area. So, that's just height area that we anticipate that heights would be able to participate, deal with a truck that does servicing, so actually a truck can come in here, turn around, back in, go out. No way it can get anything hurt. And then, this, this wall right here would probably be like a winery wall with bottles in it and stuff. And so, you walk into this winery and you're received by a receptionist, then you go up the glass stairway and then you're going upstairs and then there's the view.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, just back to the parking a little bit. I was just envisioning, first of all, your rendering is very beautiful, but I don't see any kids in it. Your rendering is very beautiful, but I don't see any children in it.
There's what? What, you want children?
Well, I'm just, because this is a beautiful rendering, but there's no children. But I'm assuming kids will be, this is not, not a no-kids place.
Correct. Yeah, there'll be kids there. I think there's a couple of kids in the rendering, aren't there? They're swimming in the pool there.
All right. I'm looking at, we have fifty-seven rooms. And if every one of those rooms is rented out and it has a couple of kids and a couple of parents or grandparents or whatever, and everybody takes the shuttle and goes down to the harbor during the day, leaving their cars down in the basement. Then comes the wedding reception with a hundred people, lots and lots of cars. Where do they park?
Well, that's what we're thirty-five percent overparked. So, that there's, there's plenty of ability to handle lots of, lots of cars. Yeah, I suppose, you know, if that all fills up and we don't anticipate it will. Because, see, the hotel, you know, when you say fifty-seven, you know, there's fifty-seven rooms. Now, every room has a car. Some people have two rooms. Some people have come by taxi. Some people have come by van from the airport. Some people have, you know, if there's a wedding, they come in different vans. So, even the load, when, when every room of the hotel is full, maybe there's fifty-seven cars. That's, that's the outside number of it. Because you don't have two cars per room. That would be very rare, could happen. But more likely, you've got one car with four kids and they got two rooms. It's more, more than likely because the rooms are small and four people in a room's probably not realistic. So, that's why we've really gone to great extent to really analyze the parking and provide, even though, this isn't a parking structure, to make the parking structure friendly, not feel like it's underground, really, you know, great arrival experience and plenty of parking, even for big cars.
If I may, Chair Nelson, I just wanted to add that it is actually unique that this hotel project is not attempting to do shared parking. Most hotels, the Urban Land Institute actually has a shared parking model that most hotels utilize because it is typical that a guest staying at the hotel is going to visit the restaurant. And so, that is a very, you know, why would you park that twice? It's one car that's coming. In this case, they haven't proposed any shared parking and they have completely parked all of the uses, you know, at the highest minimum standards under the code. Plus, they have added additional tandem parking spaces that are above and beyond required. So, I will say that staff feels pretty confident that this project is, is parked well and allows a lot of the flexibility that's mentioned. It's actually pretty rare for a hotel not to utilize a shared parking program. So, so this doesn't. So, you have sort of parking capacity built in that way along with the additional forty-four parking spaces. I just wanted you to be aware that most hotels do utilize a shared parking program.
Yeah, and I brought this up only because, you know, we're always mindful of the parking issues up there in that area. And we don't want to impact the neighborhoods, even though it's not directly, you know, associated with the neighborhood, but it isn't very far away. And you always have to be mindful that there could be an overflow of some sort and then where would the overflow go of vehicles? Scattered around the city.
There's a, there's a shopping center right across the street with a big empty, empty parking lot and we're not planning to use that. Also, I might point out, using the ULI standards, is that... You're thinking about the parking of this project as of today. What about twenty years from now? Okay? Twenty years from now, we're gonna have Uber cars, you're gonna have different ways of transportation, you've got driverless cars, you're gonna have different kinds of ways of transportation, which is gonna really reduce the parking demand. And this is what's gonna happen in the future. Also, we're giving up a whole point on, if you want to evaluate this project as a green building, one of the requirements of the, of the Green Building Council is that you don't provide one extra car in a facility than is required by the city or agency. And you lose that point. Well, we're, you know, but, you know, this is a green building and what we don't want it to be absurdly overparked because that'd be a complete waste. But we think what we got here is just, just right. It's appropriate for the uses here and we don't see any problem. There might be one day where you got the place full, but, you know, that'd be a great day. We'll probably be there. Anything else?
Can you please address Chair Nelson's question or point regarding room sizes in the hostel? Making sure that they're adequately sized. Is there flexibility on a go-forward on the building design to, you know, reduce lobbies and lounges and give more room to, space to rooms or, can you please address that?
The way we're treating that, the hostel right now, it's like the, it's like the restaurant, okay? What we're doing is we're getting an operator and what we've, you've got four thousand fifty feet, which mathematically is the amount that's required for those forty beds, okay? How that's worked really kind of depends on the different operator and there's different ideas about how that should be. Eric rightly pointed out, we're missing a couple of windows. And that's a mistake on our drawings. You know, we weren't really focused on that part of the building that much because really it, that needs, we need that operator. And they're talking to three of them right now and they all have different ideas how they're gonna do it. But all of that will come back to the building department and all of those rooms will be, you know, wonderfully sized in the right proportion and everything to handle the use. You don't see a problem there.
Thank you.
But it's not resolved at this point, that's true. Neither is the restaurant. Thank you.
Commissioner Donner?
So, we're to understand that this is a conceptual design.
For the youth hostel?
Well, I mean, the restaurant operator, the youth hostel, you're gonna, you're, you're gonna pick a certain amount of space and you're gonna try to modify it, so...
Thing is set.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whether you call it conceptual or schematic, those are two different words that have different meanings. But, yeah, we're still conceptual here. We're not doing, we haven't done working drawings yet. But we've talked to a lot of engineers and done a lot of engineering about how to build it, but yet we've got this next step to do pending on this meeting.
Well, I, you know, my comment is, I, I think you've done an excellent job. I mean, I'm very impressed with the, with the presentation, with the graphics. But I think the only, the only issues that I think we're struggling with were some of the details that, that aren't available yet.
Right.
So, maybe we can move forward with, with an approval with some conditions that, that we would consider.
Well, I do want to, so, there's frequently projects that come before the planning commission and, you know, the, the role is to look at the development standards and does it comply? And I think when the applicant's architect sort of mentioned, it's essentially a two-story house of four thousand square feet. It complies with the height limit, it complies with the setbacks, it complies with the number of rooms that the coastal commission indicated and it complies with the square footage, that it's sort of a spec space and that the operator's gonna come in, there'll be some tenant improvements. But typically, on an existing commercial building that's already been approved to comply with setbacks and height standards, et cetera, we don't bring those tenant improvements back to the planning commission. We just make sure they comply with the building code and that all development standards and entitlements are continued to be complied with. And so, in terms of the building code, we'll definitely address, you know, minimums... And so in terms of the building code, we'll definitely address, you know, minimum sizes and, and windows, and there's going to be ingress and egress and things like that for safety reasons, and so absolutely the rooms will have to comply with all of that. And so that's pretty typical to be done. Same thing with the restaurant, the operator of the restaurant's going to be very interested in the design of the kitchen and where things go, and, but for right now, it all complies with the development standards that have been articulated at this point.
Do we have standards on natural light for, for, per square foot?
The building code has standards relative to, to natural light.
The size of windows and all that, yeah.
The building code does, yes, and the project absolutely has to comply with the building code.
Great. So we have a public hearing, so we're going to go ahead and invite the public to come up and speak.
So thank you.
Do we have, thank you. Okay. So I have two. If there's anybody else that wishes to speak, please grab a card. John, is it Grochik or Grafik? I apologize.
And yes, my name is John Grochik. I have lived in Dana Point now for over twenty years, and I'm here to express my concerns. These may be premature concerns, given the number of variables that are still being talked about, but I did want to at least go on the record with what the community, I live in the Regattas, we did attend the presentation last week or week prior, and the concerns that we're going to have are going to be relating to the potential for noise. Obviously, lighting is important, and then finally, a new one, though, is air, air pollution. And I'll go into a little more detail, and I know I'm on a clock, so. The good thing is, the developer has already explained the lighting approach, which is, I guess, being described as downlighting, which is great because that should eliminate the need for bulbs to be blasting out into the homes, which we did have concerns with in previous development talks. But the new one is the noise, and since we don't know what restaurant is coming in, we don't really know what type of clientele or what, what kind of environment they're going to have, but what we can know for sure is directly across from this property is a restaurant and bar called The Point, and that is a place that has ongoing issues with, are they a bar? Are they a nightclub? Are they a restaurant? And the noise and the issues that come from that are not being addressed because the restaurant says, we want to do what we want to do. We call the city, the city says, call the police. We call the police, the police says, there's nothing to prevent them from doing this, you need to call the city, and around we go. So here, I'm hoping to be a little more proactive in talking about this new development, which is basically fifty feet away from a development that is already, or a restaurant that is already an issue for the residents close by. With that said, I should point out that this is the same facility that had the, I forget if it was the Caliente Cantina, not to mention the Wicked Garden. So you know, we have a little history here with dealing with these restaurants across the street. Last point, though, is the air pollution, and what I mean by that is restaurants cook things, and The Point has a wood burning stove. And now, given how their chimney basically blows wood smoke right into the air, and when we get a nice ocean breeze, it brings that smoke right into our communities. So, not sure how that even got passed, but if we're having a new restaurant coming in, I'm hoping that they're going to be held to stricter standards of how to keep those smells, smoke, all that other great stuff within their restaurant, and hey, it wouldn't hurt if those same standards were applied to other businesses like The Point. So with that said, I will say thank you very much for your efforts to maintain the quality of life here in Dana Point, and appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Next is Denise Erkanov.
Good evening, Commissioners. Denise Erkanov, resident of Dana Point, twenty-one years, and I'm here representing the Surf Rider Foundation, South Orange County chapter. Just of note, there is, there will be three hotels, one bed and breakfast, which is the Blue Lantern Inn, and then the newly approved hotel, which is the old Cannon site, which will be a hundred and twenty rooms, I believe, plus a spa, plus the restaurant, and now this hotel within about a block and a half radius. I, I don't know if you've taken a drive down there with the, the ins and outs of getting in and out of that particular part of town, but at Blue Lantern and Santa Clara, there is a, an access block on the street of Santa Clara at Blue Lantern. I don't, I'm curious to, as to why and how it got approved based on the Coastal Act and also other coastal access points along our coastline heading down to the harbor, since we were incorporated in nineteen eighty-nine and the Coastal Act would have, you know, would have superseded that by nineteen seventy-two. Curious that that's the only blockage in the entire Lantern District, and, you know, it really does redirect traffic and impede coastal access to that area and the town center area. Plus, it also, you know, with the congestion of traffic and routing traffic around on the backside of Spunky and Tudors and where Cannon's is, it also creates fire police, you know, all sorts of other traffic congestion and access. I would direct this to staff because I, I believe that Surf Rider Foundation would have an issue with that, with the impeding of the coastal access and, and that street, and that street blockage, and how that got passed, you know, after nineteen eighty-nine, and if it got passed without Coastal Commission approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Hummer.
Hi. Sorry, I'm a little speech impaired. Just came tonight out of curiosity. I'm not directly affected. I am a Gaypoint resident. I live right up next to the parking garage of the Ritz-Carlton Hotel, and I can tell you that parking issues in my neighborhood, in my gay community, people that want to go to events at the hotel, they find a way, a friend of a friend, and they park on my The garage sometimes gets, parking spaces are used up for storage, something, there's an event, maybe they're on, I don't know, umbrellas, they're storing things, they use parking spaces. The thing that affects me every day is getting woken up every morning by the backup beeping of delivery crux to the garage. That's how close I live. And they park, they back up because somebody did a terrible planning job. They back all the way up from Ritz-Carlton Drive the entire way, back, 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 beep, 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 all the way to the delivery area, because none of the truck drivers want to go in straight and do the turnaround at the end, so they back the entire way. Go down there, please, and take a look at how long that backing is. And I listen to it, it's supposed to start around six AM, supposed to end at ten AM, Ken PM, excuse me, and it tends to start anywhere around five to six AM, so about an hour earlier, and it can go as late as one, one-thirty AM, because once a wedding ends, let's say, and they, the music goes, kill Ken theoretically, that's the law, if you guess it, in our neighborhood, kill Ken PM. Then the music's over, the guests go, suddenly go home at Ken PM. They turn off the music, maybe they do, or maybe I have to call the police, by the way. The answer is the police, you have to call the police. And so they finally turn it down, either because they turn it down, the policeman asks him, and then the guests stay, and they talk, and they can talk loudly, and they could very well be drunk at that time. When music starts at ten or eight PM, they play it, they turn it to a certain level, and what happens is, over two, say, hours, the music gradually gets turned up, they get used to the sound, so they keep turning it up. It gets a little louder, a little louder, a little louder, and you hear things, you hear certain songs over and over. But the point is, at Ken PM, you can hear the people talking until, let's say, eleven or midnight, or even one AM, and they're outside, out in the pool. I'll just divert off of that. The other thing I wanted to say is, I, I have stayed at youth hostels a lot in my life, maybe thirty, fifty times in my life. I've done it in Europe, I've done it here in America. There's a place in California, go, I'm not going to tell you where it is because it's my secret youth hostel, but it's in a big city, and I drive to it every time. I park overnight a hundred percent of the time, and I meet people who've gotten off an airplane, I'm about to stop, who've gotten off an airplane, they're from Germany, France, whatever, and they've rented a car, and they also park there. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred James.
Good evening. My name's Fred James, and I have a property at three, four, three, eight, six, Green Lantern, next to the charred house on the Bluff. My concern would be traffic and traffic flow. I mean, as was previously mentioned, we have the Blue Lantern Inn, the project at Cannon's, this particular project, Project The Wave. I know there's B and Bs being considered next door to my property on the other side of the charred house, as well as the project, I forget the name of it, that was already graded for, I believe by the owners of the Strand at one time. It's a two-lane highway there. And, I mean, between parking for the charred house, this, the flow of traffic, it, it's a mess already, and to think that people who are going to come to these hotels and not go down Green Lantern and go down Cove Road to, you know, the harbor is really a misconception. So in my opinion, I think that, you know, you need to look at the big picture and not this piecemeal, every project that comes on board, okay, well, you, you meet the parking requirements, okay, great, you're in, you're in, you're in. Look at the big picture and live on one of those streets. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Hanson.
I'm Gary Hanson, and I'm a resident of the Strand. My address is twenty-five Shoreline. So I'm actually in favor of the project. I built a home in the Strand, and I've been waiting for that site to be finished. I walk the headlands every morning, I walk on the trails that you showed up above here, and there's no impairment, there's no impact, but to see finally some commerce coming to the city of Dana Point on that site is exciting for me. I don't see any reasons to worry about the parking. I think it was a great plan, and listened to everything tonight, so hopefully this is all conveying out a little bit. But my address is twenty-five Shoreline. I'm less than a hundred yards in from the, the building, and so I'm excited. I think it should go forward and generate commerce for the city, and hopefully Mastro's would be the restaurant that would go in there. The city of Dana Point is missing a really good steakhouse, high-end place to hold people that are coming to city of Dana Point. Otherwise, they just turn around and go up to Laguna and Newport. So anyway, my vote is in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any other requests to speak? No? Okay. So we'll go ahead and close that and bring it back to the commission for a discussion, possible motions. Who would like to start here? Actually, I have a couple of questions. During the presentation, there was a couple of mentions of weddings, so does this have the right to do events and weddings as part of their operation, or does that also come back under a use permit?
A hotel typically does envision some events like weddings, so that is a use that would be allowed, but I, I did, if I can for a moment, I wanted to talk a little bit about the conditional use permit that would be most likely associated with the restaurant. It's very probable that the restaurant will want to serve alcohol, and they will need a conditional use permit. And in terms of noise, particularly, I, I did want to talk a little bit about the specific circumstances relative to The Point, because the circumstances there are very unique in that, and why it's so important when the planning commission does consider a conditional use permit, how important that decision is, because it does vest with the land and it continues from operator to operator. And so just like anything, you can have, you know, good operators and bad operators, but the condition of approval, that was, it was really the Wicked Garden that received that, and it's been transferred over to the subsequent owners, and so it is a unique situation in that when we get complaints, there are certain rights that were vested with that conditional use permit that was actually granted to the Wicked Garden. That makes it difficult to enforce for the city on some noise level complaints relative to, I believe it's, it's the amplified music. So in this case, it would be a brand-new conditional use permit if the operator even wanted to do, not many, most of our restaurants don't apply for that, but if they did want to do some sort of music, they would need to come and make, get a conditional use permit, and that's the time that it would be very important for the planning commission to consider the noise impacts that would be associated with that. So I did want to just kind of briefly describe that there's a little bit of a unique circumstance relative to The Point and why some of the community might have expressed frustrations relative to the city's ability to enforce, and there were attorneys involved and whatnot, and they have some vested rights there. So I did want to take this opportunity to share that. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I recommend that we approve the coastal development permit, CDP seventeen double oh eight.
Do you want to go through it quick? You know, take, let's talk through this before we make a motion.
Sure.
Just make sure everybody's on the same page and...
As I said before, I, I think it was an excellent presentation. I think it was well thought out, and, and I'm, I'm impressed with, with it, and it's been part of the master plan of the, the Strand's development, and it's already been approved by the Coastal Commission conceptually.
Okay. Commissioner Noble?
Basically, I just wanted to say that a lot of the questions that I had initially with this were answered, so I think that both the applicant and staff did a very thorough job on looking at and addressing the issues with respect to the original EIR, the reduction in traffic based on the current plan, the issues with noise as well as with parking. So very impressed with what I've seen tonight.
All right. Thank you. Vice Chair?
Yeah, I, I echo the thoughts of my fellow commissioners. I think this is a phenomenal project. I, once I saw this, the, the design and saw how it takes advantage of the site and the views and, and so forth, I think it's, it's going to be a very rich and welcome facility for, for the residents and visitors to Dana Point. I'm very supportive of the project. I would, if we have a motion to approve, I would want to see Condition ninety-six modified slightly to require pedestrian access, remain open all during construction, but that the, the public improvements in the right of way don't have to be completed until prior to CEVO.
And should that happen, we have some language prepared and ready for you, sir.
I'm sorry, what?
We have language ready for you, if that should be the direction.
Thank you.
Commissioner Murphy?
Thank you. I think pretty much it's all been said. I think there's a, a lot of merit to this project, and it certainly sets a nice entryway as people come into the city, if they're coming south, and it looks like that would be a real appropriate development there, and we'll invite, you know, tourists to stop, join our city. We want people in the city, we want people in town center. I think the hostel, I know it's partly mandated, is a good idea, and because that, you know, we're a full-service city. We, we want, we want to do our best for everyone, and this project seems to be a good fit. And it encourages people to get out, walk around, see what's here. I would, I would support it.
All right. Okay, so I, I actually think this is a great, I mean, I know that I had a lot of questions, and I do have some concerns relative to parking, but I want to go back and acknowledge that this is a really well-thought-out plan. I like the design, and it's, it's a very thoughtful plan when you take into account the way that it's been essentially stuck in between the highway and the nail wall. That being said, I, I do have, not, I'm not concerned that we don't have enough parking. My concern is relative to making sure that it's managed properly so that it's used efficiently and that we don't end up with a problem. Specifically, two things. One is the six spaces that are required under the coastal plan, that if we don't define those, then how do we know that they're being provided for the public and meeting that obligation? And the second is a concern relative to the hostel. And, you know, I know that, that you had noted that this is similar to a shell building, and I don't disagree with that except for the fact that we have a very specific requirement that we're not able to measure based on what is in front of us today, and my concern is that it, it's an afterthought... And my concern is that it's an afterthought again, and I understand they're working through things. So what I'd like to do, if we're going to move forward, is add a condition that puts some minimum parameters that then staff could manage so that we don't have to delay this, we don't have to ask for more information. Because I don't think you guys want to go through that process of coming back here over and over again for a small 4,000-square-foot building. But without any specifics, my concern is how do we know that we're meeting the requirement of the Headlands Plan itself specifically, given that it's just a shell building? How do we know that they're going to have the 40 beds, it's going to be high-quality? I mean, we want to make sure this is done right all the way through from the high-end restaurant to the hostel. And we don't have those details.
Sean, I believe there is a condition relative to requirement for 40 beds. Can you let us know where, what condition that is?
So there's a general condition in here regarding...
Sean, I believe it's number 10.
Yeah, number 10, that's, thank you. We talked about this earlier. Just having, being consistent with the master CDP and applicable mitigation measures as a component of the, and it's beyond that, it's a requirement within the HDCP, you know, that the 40 beds be provided.
Right, I understand that. We, as a commission, are in the role of approving the coastal development permit that's attached to that. And that's where my concern is that the detail that we have is essentially, we could either go with what's on the plan, which in my opinion is insufficient. If you do the math, I think there's 700 square feet total dedicated to living quarters. There's no kitchen, there's no laundry facilities, I don't know how many toilets are in there. So there are a number of the things that you would want to know about in a project like this that aren't in here. And I don't want to get into the weeds on this either with the applicant. If they have specifics, they can go get those specifics and staff can work with them. But I think we need to put some kind of a parameter around it so that they have the requisite facilities that a hostel would normally have.
Perhaps a condition approval 116 that prior to condition, certificate of occupancy, the applicant/hotel/hostel operator shall demonstrate that the required 40 beds are provided consistent with the coastal commission direction and appropriate amenities are provided. Something to that effect.
Yep, I mean, that'd be fine with me. Just something that where we shine a light back on this specific issue.
No, I understand.
And that it's, that there's enough, that they're not just throwing a bunch of bunk beds in there and calling it a hostel. That it's a high-quality hostel that, you know, at the room rate that we're going to require, I would expect that you could go in there and eat, that there would be a kitchen where you could cook. And those, that's a typical hostel, you know, you get that, you get laundry facilities. Those are the kind of things that I would expect to see in there. So that would be, you know, my direction if we were to be able to move forward with this, to include that as a condition clarification.
Should that be prior to building permit, to work out those details rather than prior to CEVO?
Oh, I would think that you'd want to do before you pull the building permit.
Yeah.
We can put it there. We can still put it there, we can add it as, we can just add it as 116 and just take out prior to building permits.
Commissioner, in addition, I also shared your concern about the six spaces that are just going to be in there somewhere. There's no, if there's not any signage, somebody that comes to want to walk the Headlands, how do they, how do they know they have access to public parking? Right now, there's specific slots you can see when you go there. So somehow that should be...
No, absolutely great question. Obviously, signage isn't going to be an important part of the project. And there is a condition of approval that a separate master sign program shall be developed. And we can make sure that's incorporated as part of that review, sir, absolutely.
Are we going to, are they going to be specific spaces that are dedicated?
Again, right now, my understanding is their plan is to have everything that the general spaces are open to allow for the most efficient use of the parking available. There's an efficiency that comes by providing all the parking spaces to be open. You know, if that's something that the coastal, that planning commission wants to see for those six spaces, obviously that's something we can work with the applicant about if we're concerned about really making sure we're addressing those six spaces. But I think they envision that they're going to provide the six spaces and with the flexibility of their parking program, you know, potentially providing even more than that, obviously, for, you know, visitors to the site.
Right, but those spaces, again, not to beat a dead horse here, those spaces are not for the hotel. Those are for the general public. And my concern with the parking plan is it is, that there isn't a set of rules and there isn't any spaces that are specific to any one person. So how do we manage, how do they manage that? Because how are they going to, I'm the general public, I pull in, I say, I want to park here, they, it's full. Let's just, let's just assume that they're super successful and it's completely full. And there isn't a space for me to park so I can go hike on the trail. That would be my concern. And they can't turn me away because there's supposed to be spaces. How do we know that those six have been, you know, allocated under the, you know, in a valet plan? I don't think we do. So what I would ask, again, not to get into their business, but to make sure that the city is getting their, what was part of the original agreement, which was these six spaces, that they're indicated somewhere as part of the parking plan that gets ultimately approved with staff. That there is specific notation about where those are. And maybe there's certain iterations that they use, but there should be some way to know that those six spaces are out there for the, you know, for the general public to use.
You know, whether it's signage or, you know, I had a, trying to draft something up, it's trying to list to you, to hopefully address the concern is, you know, at the request of the Director of Community Development, the applicant shall provide evidence that the required six spaces are available at all times for the public. And how that's occurred and how that, and how that is accomplished, we can continue to work with the operators to ensure that.
I think Chair Nelson is interested in having those be dedicated spaces. If there is agreement among the commissioners that there's a condition that way, my suggestion would be that it's, that they're dedicated only during the hours of operation of the trail system. Because there's pros and cons, I absolutely understand the point of having those dedicated spaces. It is less efficient because if you, during the day, you don't have six visitors, they just sit there empty where they could be utilized. So there's a loss of efficiency. But I understand the point, that would be my recommendation if there is a condition of approval that way, that they're just tied to the hours of operation of the trail system.
I would be, I'd be comfortable with that. I mean, again, I don't want to get into their business, it sounds like they've got a pretty good idea of how to operate this. But I think we do need to point out where those are for the general public so that they, they're always available when, you know, people show up.
Absolutely. And so I would suggest something to that effect is perhaps condition approval 117 that the required six spaces, as required by coastal, shall be signed and tied to the hours of operation of the public trail system. Shall be made available, you know, we can verify, but that'd be condition approval 117 to that effect.
Okay.
With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Vice Chair, go ahead.
I move that the planning commission approve coastal development permit, CDP 17-0008, site development permit, SDP 17-0013, minor conditional use permit, CUP 17-0005M, for a new 57-room hotel, 4,000-square-foot restaurant space with outdoor dining, 40-bed hostel, visitor center retaining walls greater than 30 inches in height visible from the public right-of-way, and tandem parking for employees, valet, Wave Resort, Headlands Commercial Site located 34075 PCH within the coastal zone. And I move that subject to some added conditions. One, as discussed about the six parking spaces being designated during the hours of operation of the trail system. Two, with further hostel details to be worked out between the Director of Community Development and the operator applicant, to make sure all required requisite facilities are there. And three, with the modification as discussed on Condition 96.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last one.
Revised Condition 96 to make sure that pedestrian access is open at all times during construction on the sidewalks and that the public improvements not be required to be built until the certificate of occupancy.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. A second, anybody?
Chair Nelson, can I interrupt for one second? Can we just clarify with the hostel condition, the specific amenities? You made mention to cooking facilities and laundry facilities. Were there any other specific amenities?
Well, my, my experience with hostels is that you get a bed, you get a place to cook, you get a place to do your laundry, and there's an area to eat and lounge. So those would be the things that I would expect to see in this facility. And enough adequate space per person, as well as natural light and that you guys can work out the details. So is that...
That's efficient.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Opel. And you, do we have all those conditions? Do you have them all written down?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, please vote. That carries 5-0, congratulations. Thank you. All right, does anybody want to take a break to use the restroom? No, you're good, okay.
You look so mean.
No, just, you got mad at me last time for not doing it, so. Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is Item 3 Coastal Development Permit, CDP 16-0013, variant 16001, and Minor Site Development Permit, SDP 17-0017M, to demolish a single-family residence and construct a new 4,505-square-foot single-family residence with reduced rear yard setback that is consistent with the existing house and increased retaining wall heights in the front yard setback for a property within the residential single-family for RSF 4 Zone located at 118 Monarch Bay Drive. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Senior Planner John Champa will give the staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Champa, I'm the case planner on the project for 118 Monarch Bay. So you can see, here's the project location, it's located within the Monarch Bay community as stated within the RSF 4 zoning designation. Site is currently improved with an existing 3,200-square-foot single-family home with an attached two-car garage. Just to give you a little background on this property, it was originally constructed in 1964 where it received a variance for a reduced rear yard setback of 14 feet. The variance was issued while under the, while the property was under the County of Orange jurisdiction. The city unfortunately does not have official record of that variance that was issued. However, there are supporting documents that do identify that the variance was approved at the proposed setback of 14 feet. Given that there is no official documentation, staff's requiring that a new variance be included with the application to reestablish the setback. This is the existing conditions of the site, with improved with the one-story house. As you can see, there are some, the slope of the street there, as well as the topography of the site, does provide some challenging elements to the property. That's why some of the entitlements are proposed today. So to give you the project's scope, it is to demolish the existing house and construct a new 4,500-square-foot house along with an attached 30, or 2,300-square-foot garage and some additional site improvements, including outdoor deck and pool. Project's requiring a coastal development permit because it's located within the coastal zone and jurisdictional area, or coastal commission jurisdictional area of the coastal zone. The variance is requested, as previously stated, to reestablish the 14-foot rear yard setback. Minor site development permits are required, or requested to allow the retaining walls along in the front yard setback to exceed 30 inches. The project as proposed was approved by the homeowners association earlier this year. So the coastal development permit, or the project does comply with all the requirements of the coastal development permit, given that the site is, has been existing, is a developed site. And there are no impacts to public access or any environmentally sensitive habitat area. The project does comply with all the applicable development standards with the exception of the requested variance, which was previously approved by the county, as well as the minor site development permit. This is the project's site plan, shows all of the setbacks highlighted in red. The side yard setback is required at five feet, however, along the uphill-sloped area, 15 feet is being provided. And it is also identifying the 14-foot rear yard setback. As is typical with homes in this community, an outdoor, an open outdoor area is provided, as you can see here with the deck area, as well as a pool. The front elevation is shown here, which is actually the west elevation, identifies the partially subterranean garage that will be accomplished with some retaining walls, as well as, when viewed from the street, it'll give the appearance of a single-level home, which is consistent with the neighborhood. The project does comply with the height requirements as well as required by the city, as well as the homeowners association. The variance request is to, as previously stated, reestablish a 14-foot rear yard setback. It would allow the property to maintain the previously approved developable area or the development envelope of the lot. The variance would allow for flexibility to provide for better development or design of the property and to address the CCNR limitations of the site, which allow the property to just be one story from the graded pad elevation that was existed prior to development. The request is also consistent with the neighborhood. Staff did survey the area and there were a number of variances that were approved throughout the community over the course of its development. Staff counted 73 just in this northern component of the development. However, there was, is a, is a southern portion of the development that did receive additional variances as well. The minor site development is requested for retaining walls over 30 inches in the front yard setback. This is, was related to the site's steep topography. The retaining walls in, along the front would be up to 11 feet for two of the retaining walls to provide vehicular access to the garage, given that slope constraint along the front of the property. There would also be a six-foot retaining wall along the side property line or the north property line that retain the side yard area. And as you can see in the photo to the, to the left, it's generally in the same location and same heights as proposed. The, as you can see on the right-hand side, that is the sloped area there that would have the two retaining walls that would parallel each other to provide vehicle access to the partially subterranean garage area. Project conforms to all the required findings, given that the project is consistent with the city's LCP. The application, applicant is, the application is consistent with the Dana Point zoning ordinance, as well as the required findings for the coastal development permit variance and minor site development permit. The recommendation is for the planning commission to approve the application, subject to the findings and the conditions included in the draft resolution. So that concludes staff's presentation. The applicant architect is also available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Starting with Commissioner Murphy? Do you have any?
Do I have any question?
Yeah, for staff.
Oh, for staff.
Just one question. I saw, somewhere in here, I saw, and I'm wondering if it was a typo or a real, is there an existing basement at the site that's very large? Somewhere in here, it said there was like a 6,000-square-foot basement or something like that.
I don't believe so.
Existing.
No. I mean, the overall building area is going to be around 6,000 square feet, given the house and the, and the basement or garage. So that, that total square footage is about at around 6,000 square feet.
Did you see the same thing?
Oh. We'll have to look into that.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually on sheet 81. It says, "Original square footage with a main level of 4,820 square feet, with the basement level of 6,805, and then a new square footage with the main level and basement level as you're proposing."
I'm sorry, I don't think my pages are numbered, but I think that I, that number may have been added between the...
Yeah, she...
Oh, on the, on the plans, okay.
81 plan.
I'm sorry, I was thinking it was in my staff report. What was the sheet number again?
AD1?
In the back.
I, I think that that was just a carryover from a previously edited version. Might have... Might have just been a typo from the architect. He can possibly speak to that. But the square footage is provided in the staff report, along with the table provided on sheet G point zero zero one, do reflect the project's scope in terms of square footage for the main level, as well as the basement garage area.
Okay, and then I had one more, and it's just how it's written is on page three of the actual staff report, under the coastal development permit section. Says the project includes the construction of a two-story, square-foot, single-family development. The CCNRs are specific to a one-story. So is it technically a one-story with a subterranean level garage? Just be, it's just how it's written, that's all.
Yeah, well, that's the, between, the differences between the terminate, terminology from the homeowners' association versus how the city actually views how this development is. Because the, because the garage is actually, that's why I use the terminology "partially subterranean", it is visible, so the city does view that technically as two floors. However, I believe the homeowners' association views, views that more as a one level.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Donner?
On the, one of the drawings, it, or the pictures, it showed story poles. What, it's a, if it's a flat roof, there's no need for the story poles?
The, as part of the review process through the homeowners' association, it's very thorough. It really engages the neighborhood, so that they are very aware of what's being proposed. Since the, since the plate heights and the roof is actually at a higher elevation than the current home, those are to give the nearby residents an idea in terms of what they will be looking at, what is the, what will be the perceived real-life heights of the structure. So that's just to give them a tool to understand exactly what will be there in the future if approved.
So it's higher than the, higher than the existing building?
That's correct.
Well, a quick question. This, the setback variance. So right now, the house is already at that setback, right?
That is correct.
Not, because we don't have a copy, we're essentially making sure that we, they carry their vesting forward that they would have otherwise?
That's correct.
Okay. That was all I had. Thanks. Do you have anybody who wishes to speak tonight? Okay. Stan, good evening.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm Stan Andrade, the architect for the project. First of all, thanks Jonathan for all your good work. It was a road getting here, and I appreciate everything you did to get us here. And I do want to speak to the question regarding the square footage. That is indeed a holdover from a previous iteration of a plan that, that did not get through the HOA process. So I apologize, that, that section that says original square footage is just a typo that shouldn't even exist. So I apologize for that. Other than that, I've read through all the conditions. We're, we're acceptable to everything. I'm just here to answer any questions you may have and appreciate your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing that there's no more people requesting to speak, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission for discussion and a vote. Anyone? All right, I will start this one off. I feel like I keep asking everybody else to do this. So I think it's a really well-designed project. It's great to see, in some cases, some of these older structures torn down and replaced with new ones. I have no concern with the variance for a number of reasons. One, it's because it already exists. And then two, the HOA has obviously thoroughly, thoroughly reviewed this project and also concurs that it's consistent with the plans in that neighborhood. So with that, I would make a motion that we approve the project. Unless anybody's got any questions. All right, that's a, I made a motion. Commissioner Donner, second? Take a vote. And that moves five zero. Congratulations. Thank you. Moving on to our last, I think it's our last item of the night. Item four is a conditional use permit, CUP seventeen dash zero zero six, which is a request to replace a non-conforming administrative office use with an alternative non-conforming administrative office use to relocate the existing Union Bank, currently located at the corner of Pacific Coast Highway and Golden Lantern, to the first floor of an existing multi-tenant commercial building at two-four-five-three-two Del Prado Avenue, Town Center. Do we have a staff report?
Sean is on the hot seat again.
Good evening, Sean.
Good evening all again. Planning Commissioner Sean Nicholas, project planner. This is for a project at the Lighthouse Facility located at two-four-five-three-two Del Prado, a CUP, to switch out not, legal non-conforming use for another non-conforming use. Just to give you some background and also reference, you can see there the vicinity map in terms of where the Lighthouse, what is deemed the Lighthouse Building due to its architectural style. It was built in nineteen seventy-nine and has been primarily administrative office use on all the floors. And that's been backed up by both city history in terms of our files, as well as information provided by the applicant. In two thousand four, the, two thousand, I'm sorry, in two thousand eight, the Town Center project was approved. And with those improvements, it inclu, it required that that driveway on Del Prado, when the projects went down, when the public improvements went down Del Prado, they closed up the existing driveway. And that was required when there was access to the parking off the existing alleyways. And also with that Town Center plan, it made those administrative office uses that were located on the first floor within that first forty feet, as it's specified in the Town Center, as I stated, legal non-conforming. So back in, then subsequently in January of this year, they did, they being the property owners, did receive a SDP, a minor site development permit and conditional use permit associated with, in addition to fill in that space that used to be the driveway that would go through the building, that was about seven, seven-hundred-and-sixty-four square feet. At that time, associated with that approval, they envisioned putting in a restaurant use. Well, they've since moved away from that restaurant use, and they're looking to, as stated by Chair Nelson, potentially move the Union Bank facility there at the corner of Golden Lantern and PCH to this facility. As you may or may not know, there was a previously approved mixed-use development called Vista Del Mar at the Golden Lantern and PCH site. And before that project can ultimately move forward, the Union Bank site has to find a new location. The project is in for all of its applicable engineering, grading, demo, and construction, building plan checks. We've actually gone through a couple of iterations. So they are moving forward aggressively with that project. So the proposal before you is to allow for that non-conforming use, the bank, to replace the existing legal non-conforming use. And a key component of this project, and we'll talk a bit more about parking, but I really wanted to talk about this quickly. And when we have the site plan showing up, here you have the gray is that infill, that's seven-hundred-and-sixty-four square feet. The bank is proposed to utilize this entire first floor, and I have a, just a shell building floor plan to show you. But you can see with this proposal, they will provide the eighteen parking spaces in a, what you would probably consider a standard parking configuration previously associated with the approval in January, which came as a de minimis waiver, actually, before this body. So you, I know most of you, I know Commissioner Opal, you weren't on, on the commission at that time, but got to see their proposed layout at that time. So you can see this is a much more traditional layout, and the only other real change is that they put the parking, parking, the trash enclosure out towards the alley, setback five feet, consistent with the requirements of engineering. But again, there's more than sufficient space to provide for the, all of that parking in that area. You can see here that we've calculated the parking based on the, with the addition of that seven-hundred-and-sixty-four square feet, so filling in that space. And with all of the parking for the bank use, the financial services use, as the Dana Point zoning code identifies it, it requires eleven spaces and for the administrative office use on the second and third floor that will actually continue, adds to the property owner's real estate office and a real estate investment office. Their required parking is eighteen, which, as you saw on the previous slide, they provide eighteen standard parking spaces, seventeen with one ADA accessible space. And again, as I so, as I noted, this is just to show you that they're creating just a shell space. If the use is approved this evening, and actually, the director talked a little bit about this earlier, about the tenant, if it was approved, the use, the TI will just come through the building department and ensure compliance through that process. It's important to note that they, the applicants have submitted this application to fill in this space in terms of creating the shell building. So they are moving forward with that project through the building permit process. So in terms of staff's review, we have found it to be, staff has found it to be consistent with applicable Town Center and Dana Point zoning code requirements. It does meet the parking requirements. Another great opportunity associated with this project in that it's a administrative office is the limited hours of operation, is gen, is called out in your staff report, page three. Typically, the hours are Monday through Thursday, nine to five, nine to six Friday, and nine to one Saturday and close Sunday. So staff has identified this as an opportunity to create some additional potential public parking in the downtown. We've made the goal that made known to the applicants, and they're open to having those discussions. And so a condition of approval has been added, number nineteen, which just states that the applicant, the property owner and the city shall work together to hopefully create that, open that parking up during hours of closure of the bank to provide for some additional public parking for that portion of the Town Center. Overall, staff does believe that all the findings can be made to support the CUP, in particularly consistency with the general plan, which does promote to have a mix of uses that are, help generate and create a vibrant mixed-use district that will not negatively impact surrounding uses inconsistent with the applicable development standards for the project. With that, staff does recommend the planning commission adopt the draft resolution for the CUP. This concludes staff's presentation. Myself and the applicant are prepared to address any of the planning commissioners' questions this evening.
Great, thanks, Sean. I have a couple of questions real quickly. As it relates to the Union Bank, do we know how much square footage they currently occupy?
That's a great question. I do not know.
Okay. And then, as it relates to the legal non-conforming uses, what is, what are the, what do our, what does the zoning say about replacing and/or enlarging?
Yes, thank you, sir. That's a great question. So there is a provision under our non-conforming ordinance provisions in the Dana Point zoning code that do allow for this change-out of non-conforming uses with the approval of the planning commission through the CUP process. And that key finding is discussed in the staff report, in which we've highlighted in the resolution as well, is that it's not going to impact, as we noted, the surrounding uses. And again, due to the hours of operation, the, the, providing all the necessary parking and the opportunity for, for additional public parking, we find that there's, is consistent with those requirements.
Okay. And then as far as enlarging legal non-conforming use, is there any rules about that?
Well, it's an administrative office use has been a component of that. And again, placing the non-conforming use in that space is, subject to those findings, is, is a, is able to be done, especially once you, if you provide the additional parking.
Okay, but...
Chair, Chair Nelson, if I could interrupt. I think what you're getting at is if they want to expand, if this were to be approved, and there is a discretionary permit process that allows for the expansion of...
Well, I guess my first question would be, is it an expansion for that seven-hundred square feet? Because it's not, there's nothing there today.
That's an entitled project, which actually they've, I think we've actually even issued the building permit. So that's moving forward, and that could move forward as a, as a restaurant, approved restaurant space today.
Right. No, I understand that, but we're not putting a restaurant in there. We're adding banks. I guess it might... Do we need to make findings relative to using space that it's never had an occupancy with occupancy that's illegal, non-conforming?
I'm looking at our code section right now, and there is a provision that allows for the expansion of a non-conforming, non-residential use. A one-time expansion of a non-conforming, non-residential use is allowed subject to the approval of condition, conditional use permit by the planning commission. Expansions which substantially bring the use into better conformance with this code are encouraged. The expansion shall result in compliance with the signage and landscaping regulations of the code. The area of the expansion is required to comply with current parking standards.
Okay, great. So which, okay, that kind of leads me to my, the next thing, which is this ties out at something that the city ultimately required, right, taking away that driveway. And so we're, in a sense, putting a piece back together that should have been there the whole time. And... That, okay, perfect. That was it? Thank you. Commissioner Donner?
Are they planning on having an ATM machine?
Excellent question. You know, that's something that hasn't been identified associated with this layout. What we have done is we've provided some conditions of approval in here in case they do decide, to decide to have one. In terms of trying, again, to activate the mixed-use district, the pedestrian environment on Del Prado, it would be staff's first, first preference that the ATM be located on Del Prado and accessible from that point. If it's not able, for whatever reason, if it had to be indoors, it just shouldn't be directed towards the alleyway, which leads to a residential area behind. And there's just requirements we put in there, conditions of approval. I can actually tell you particularly which conditions, but just to provide certain protections. That way, we don't have light and glare and other types of issues. But we have conditioned the project that the preference would be towards Del Prado. And that's on condition of approval. Number eleven.
It would seem from a safety standpoint, you'd be way better off to have that on the street rather than back by the parking lot, where it would be more secluded?
Absolutely, sir.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I don't like condition nineteen. The way it's worded, at least. I like the spirit of it. I don't like the way it's worded. It seems like it's extorting something out of the applicant, saying you must and shall enter into a lease agreement for this stuff. So can we change that to say something like negotiate in good faith or whatever? I mean, why do we force them to enter into a, a lease arrangement for those as a condition of this?
I think that thought process was that this is a discretionary permit, so it's at your discretion. And it is a non-conforming use, and there's a reason why the Town Center plan really didn't want, you know, bank uses within the first forty feet on Del Prado or Pacific Coast Highway. And so sort of as an exchange for allowing a non-conforming use to continue, because you have the discretion to do that, it was good to accept this use as that the peak hours of operation are likely different than a restaurant use, which we're getting a lot of interest for restaurant uses. So it's helping with a good mix, which helps with our parking situation. And in addition, that during the hours when it's not being used, they will meet with us. It doesn't say that they have to. It does say that they will work with the city to participate. I think you could say, you know, negotiate in good faith. I think it really is the same thing. It's semantics. But that was sort of the thought process behind asking for this condition, is that you are giving something as part of the consideration of this discretionary permit and in exchange for them to work with us to create shared public parking when they're not in operation.
Okay, thank you. The, the way I read it, it says, it starts out by saying "work with the city", but then later it says "by entering into a lease agreement". So it seems to me, I'm supportive of them, you know, being open-minded about it, but there's no specificity here with respect to lease terms and, or anything like that. So I personally would be, I'm not supportive of this condition as worded.
We're fine with negotiate in good faith. I think we cannot obligate. It, it's a separate legal binding agreement. So yes, our intent was not to bind them through this condition.
I would support binding, but that's just me. Only if they were supportive of it, though. We, we do still have a public hearing, so we gotta invite the public to speak. If anybody has any more questions for staff? Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, just a point of information for my own well-being. Didn't we discuss this bank removal when we were, we were discussing the Golden Lantern and Coast Highway building? Wasn't there, was, am I mixing this up?
Well, the, where they are located today, that project is in for building permit to be demoed. And there's, the property owner was willing to consider Union Bank going back into that project. They were gonna be outside of the forty feet, though, so it would have been compliant there. But during construction, they need a place to go. And I think Union Bank is opting to find a permanent location instead of moving temporarily for a few years and then moving back into that project.
Okay, that explains it. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak other than the architect? Okay. Maybe you can address...
Hello, Stan Andrade again, yes. Yes, we noted that same condition, and we were willing to accept it, but it was a little ambiguous or loose, and so maybe something to define it a little bit better would, would help everybody. But otherwise, we've read through the rest of the conditions. I'm Stan Andrade, the architect. I'm Stan Andrade, the architect, and thank you, Sean, also, for everything. Any other questions we were willing to ask, answer, otherwise we appreciate the approval tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, I have one question. Under condition nineteen, it was, would allow the public to share that space during the bank's, it says, hours of operation. If you're using an ATM machine, that could be twenty-four hours. How about the bank's retail operation?
With regards to their hours of operation?
The nineteen is, has to do with parking, when it would be available to the public to use, and this, it states it would be available to the general public when the bank is not in operation. I'm saying the retail operation is not in operation, because that's a nine-to-five operation, and it's defined differently.
Yeah, so just to allow, a lot during hours that the bank uses not in operation?
So if I may clarify, the intent of this condition is that during the hours that were specified in the staff report, which differ, so Monday through, I think it was Friday, they're nine to six or, or something, and then Saturday, and they're closed Sunday, that those are the hours meant, so when they're not in operation during those hours, that it would be shared public parking.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Just to follow up on the comments, if the planning commission wants to approve with some amendments to the condition of approval, number nineteen, I would suggest the following language. The property owner shall negotiate with the city in good faith to enter into a lease agreement to allow the general public to park in the parking lot during hours that the bank's retail use is not in operation, and I think that probably synthesizes everybody's comments.
Great, thank you. All right, with that, we'll close up the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and a vote. Anybody want to lead off here? Vice Chair?
I'm supportive of this project, subject to the revised condition nineteen, as stated by City Attorney Farrell.
Commissioner Donner?
I also support the project. I think...
All right. Commissioner Opel?
I, too, support it. I'm happy to keep the Union Bank in operation and staying in Dana Point.
Commissioner Murphy?
I'm good.
All right. Well, I think it's, I mean, I think it's great, I think the fact that we're closing off that block, which makes it more of a pedestrian space by adding this building back in and keeping a current tenant who's down in the Lantern District, keep them open and operating is great. I'm fully in support at, with the changes that were suggested by the city attorney that were prompted by Vice Chair McCann. So I'd make that motion.
Second?
Second by Commissioner, I think, Donner, I think you got it first. All right. All right, let's go for a vote. And that item carries five-o. Congratulations. All right. Moving on to E, old business, no old business, new business, there is none. Do we have any staff reports?
So our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for July twenty-fourth, and we will be doing the reorg at that time, so I just wanted to give you all the heads-up for that. We'll be reorganizing. As of right now, we only have one item on that agenda. I was interested if the commission would be interested in a presentation from our economic development staff on our microsite that the economic, that they've created to promote as, for a specific target audience. We could have staff come through, since the agenda's sort of light, and go through a fifteen, ten, fifteen-minute presentation just showing that microsite, if there's interest.
I'd love to see that, plus the swag that the city's designed.
Okay.
Commissioner comments, starting on my left. Commissioner Donner?
The Concert in the Park was a huge success on Sunday, looked great, and the, just recovered from Fourth of July, so it was just, it was timely.
Commissioner Opel?
I don't have anything to add.
Great, I have plenty to say, but I'll bite my tongue tonight for the sake of the hour.
Totally.
Yeah, I know, right? Vice Chair?
No comment.
Commissioner Murphy?
I think we discussed before how great the fireworks were, and a very good, very good turnout for our city.
Yes, it was.
It was great.
All right. Okay, so with that, I'm going to adjourn the next, I think this is the last time I get to adjourn a meeting. Adjourn, the next regular meeting of the planning commission will be held Monday, July twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, beginning at six PM, or soon thereafter, in the City Council Chamber, located at three-three-two-eight-two Golden Lantern, Suite Two Ten, Dana Point.
Phew. Man. This project I thought was great from the beginning, I was like, oh, man, I just want to prove it.
Yeah. He's talking me out of it.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, yeah.
Well, I've been involved with projects where you approve something, and they come back, and you go, well, that's not, they said, well, it was a conceptual plan. Well, wait a minute. Hey, Sean.
Hey, good work tonight.
Excellent job, Sean.
Thank you.